Okay, the first item of business for this evening is the approval of exhibits 5-1 and 5-2. Can I have a motion to get those approved?
I'll move those minutes to be adopted.
A second.
Any discussion? Mr. Geisfeld, you want to call the roll?
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. McKenzie?
Aye, motion carried. All right, we have communications to the board. Dr. Moll?
Okay, great to see everybody tonight. This is a, this is a big night we were just talking about. It was one year ago, it was actually Tuesday, March 10th, where we were meeting in city council chambers. And I was giving an update to the board on what we were hearing about this new thing called COVID and what could happen. And I mentioned on that Tuesday night that we could be seeing something as drastic as schools being shut down for 15 days at a time on a rolling nature based upon that. That was a Tuesday. On that Thursday afternoon, the governor closed schools in the state for the rest of the year. That Tuesday, the 10th, it has been a very long year, but it's great to see the board back for an in-person, regular meeting. And so we want to talk about some of the things going on as we normally do. We're going to start with good news, going to the, going to the first slide. We were so excited to welcome students back. The students in our school-based pathway, welcome them back on March 1st into our all-in model. These are some Hastings students from right here involved in student council. And the Bears Group welcomed their peers as they entered the building on March 1st. You can see a shot here of the high school. Again, shots of some of the all-in learning. Huge thanks to everyone who worked so hard to put everything in place for this. And we'll be talking about more about our transition to all-in learning in just a couple of moments. Next slide, please. Shout out to students and staff, and that was a shot. Go, go back one. That was from Greensview. We thought that was a cool thing that they did there. And it was just, it was certainly great to see all of our kids back. One of the exciting things coming up. Did I get to see this tomorrow night? Our, our high school is presenting Something Rotten with limited in-person screening, available the weekend of March 24th. And they're going to have video on-demand streaming available. And so they are getting very, very creative during the time of the pandemic and moving forward with our annual musical. And I think everyone knows that the musicals at our high school are just the best of the best. And so we're so, so excited for our kids and so thankful for the staff and the parents who have made this possible. And I know I'm excited to see this show tomorrow evening. And so moving in to the update, we have a number of things to cover tonight. And so what I'd like to do is just give you a list of the things that we're going to be talking about over the next period of time. So we have a fair amount of ground to cover. And so I will be joined by a number of my colleagues as we walk through these different items. And obviously, as members of the board, you feel free to stop us at any time. And if you want us to go into more depth on any of these topics or you have questions. Going to the next slide. So I wanted to talk about all-in learning, and we're going to do kind of a by-the-numbers. And I'm going to start with Dr. Hatton. If you could grab the cordless mic over there, Andy. And I'm going to have Andy walk through this slide from the educational point of view, talk about some of the numbers and the things that happened in the transition. And then Chris is going to talk about this from an operational point of view. So Andy?
Um, yeah, so we had, again, I know that you can read the screen, but I just wanted to give a little overview of the lift that took place to make this happen because we wanted to accommodate as many students as we could in our fourth opening of the pathways. Originally, obviously, we said it was going to be at the semester. And then by going all-in, we wanted to offer one more opportunity. And we had 64 students leave the online academy and go to the school-based pathway, and 146 students to the online academy. And actually, embedded within that 146, there were over 120 from the high school alone, which, as I talked about when we were meeting to decide, when the board was deciding about whether to go all-in, we did talk about how heavy a lift that would be at the high school level due to the complexity of the classes and the courses. And there were over 700 individual course changes that needed to take place to make that happen. And so I just cannot thank the people enough that worked very diligently for about 50 straight hours to pull that off and inform families by Thursday, late afternoon, early evening. And I also want to say thank you to the staff members, namely at the high school, that were impacted by those schedule changes and that once again shifted to meet the needs of our kids. And they just did an amazing job to do that. With that in mind, for a variety of reasons, we are, I do want to inform the board and the public that we are going to be, one of the things that I've said many times is that we would continue to process requests even after the deadline, just to, and schedule what we can. And while we did that, we did have some scheduled requests come in after the deadline. We were able to place some, but we scheduled it so tightly that at this point, we're going to stop processing those by the end of this week and moving forward into the end of the year for numerous reasons. Due to staffing and the constraints, we are capped out in the online academy and in our schools. As well as, it's, you know, we do need to think about the education transition in the final trimester and in the final quarter for kids. And then finally, looking ahead, that we do need to shift the focus of the team to the summer and beyond. So for the variety of reasons, we are going to cease to process those.
Just briefly, Andy, what, you said teachers or staff are accommodating changes. Could you give us a sense of what that means? Because I know when I hear it, I'm, I could take it just as very minimally or very maximally, and I don't really understand necessarily what is entailed. So could you share, what does that mean?
Sure. We had, you know, when you're teaching your course load and your students and relationships are developed, with the, with the exodus that we had, specifically Carol at the high school, with a significant number of students, it left some of our sections relatively small, which meant that we had to start to combine some sections. And so relationships that were fostered over time, the first three quarters of the school year, might be, have been disrupted by, you know, some of the changes. Also, we had teachers that-
And I just kind of think about it as, what if a third of your student body showed up for the last quarter? Like if everybody decided to move to Upper Arlington and we had a quarter of students switch to a different school? That's how I've been thinking about it.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, there were some courses that we just don't offer in the online academy. And again, there were a lot of teachers that just said, what can I do to help make this work for these kiddos? And so a lot of credit needs to go to our teachers.
I will say, I was on the phone this afternoon with a colleague from another district in central Ohio, just looking, as they, it's a district who is preparing for a transition to all-in. And they were looking for some advice on some things that had gone well and some challenges. And, and they said, now, you didn't open your online academy again, right? Like you didn't open the pathways, right? I said, oh, no, we opened the pathways again. And, and they're like, oh, my God, how did you, how did you pull that off? And I mentioned all the things Andy just talked about. But I wouldn't want the board to think that every school district who's transitioning to all-in is opening the pathways again. Some are, some aren't. But some of the ones that aren't are just because it is such an enormous lift. And so again, we're just really proud of everyone on the team who worked so hard to accommodate all of these students and families. But again, that is coming to an end. And so we are going to need to stay put for the remainder of the year. We want to make sure that that message is received. That'll be in my weekly message to families as well.
Thanks. I just wanted to comment again that usually these course, making courses is what we do. Once a year, it takes a month to six weeks. And we, we thank our stars that we never have to do it again until next year. Next year rolls around so quickly and we all will have to do it again. And this seemingly, you have put, your staff and all of, all of our teachers have done this again and again this year. Something that's probably the most stressful thing that, that some of our staff ever go through. And they've done it again and again, and with good spirits. So thank you both for your leadership and thank you, Andy, your team, just completely coming through for us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Andy. And I'm going to have Chris come up and talk about, Andy talked about a part of the transition, but the operational side of this is also something we just wanted to update the board on. So Chris, could you talk to us about that, please?
Yeah, so just, you know, not to overemphasize this word, but it's so important as we got ready to accept students back all-in, was the teamwork that happened to make, to make this happen. So, you know, once that decision was made, we started working right away on a plan to make that happen. And it involved moving furniture in every one of our school buildings. For example, Hastings and Jones were using desks that were previously at the high school. And so we had to move all those desks back and reset classrooms. And when I say we, I mean teachers helping reset and thinking outside of the box on ways to, ways to create the maximum distance possible in those classroom. Custodians, aides, you name it, they all were jumping in. Even, even our football team helped us unload a moving truck of, of desks that came from Jones. And so it was, it was a monumental task that, that reset 368 spaces, 93 spaces at the high school. When I say spaces, it's not just the high school, I mean, not just classrooms. It's, it's learning centers, it's gymnasiums, it's cafeterias, auditoriums, 103 spaces at the middle schools and 172 spaces at the elementaries. And so an overall team effort to make it happen when everyone came back on, on March 1st. But you can't forget that this effort continues every day. Our custodians, our maintenance, our building aides, our teachers, every day are having to reset things. And a good example would be, whether it's Tremont or Barrington at the high school, we're setting up the six-foot tables for lunch in the gymnasium every day and then taking them down as soon as lunch is over. So that space can be used for, for a class, a gym class or something of that nature. And so very, very proud of, of the team that continues to, every day, reset things and make sure things are in the proper order. But it was a monumental effort to, to reset all the classroom spaces and the schools to, to welcome people back.
Chris, could you talk a little bit more about how the transition specifically for lunch has worked? Because as, as we've talked about a lot, we're ensuring six feet of distancing at lunch. How has that worked and how's that going?
So I think, I think lunch was one of the areas that, quite frankly, we were most worried about going into, going into this. And I think that's an area that is a big point of pride for us in terms of keeping that six foot of spacing for, for students during lunch. We have brought in six-foot, you know, rubber-made plastic tables that are lining spaces, that are creating that, that six feet for, for students at the middle schools and high schools. And then at the elementary, our principals have, have done an amazing job splitting up the cohorts between some staying in the classrooms and some, some going to the cafeteria and keeping that social distance during lunch. And so a real shout out to our principals and our nutritional service staff for working really closely together to make sure that we could serve lunch in that timeframe that we have and keep people six feet apart. That was one of the most important things to our medical advisory team, is during lunch when masks are down, to keep, keep that distance. And, and I think we've, we've accomplished that. And, and the students that are going through that every day, you know, are, are following the guidelines and doing the best they can, you know, as soon as they're done eating to put their masks back on. And, and I will tell you that it's, it's not perfect. We are every day looking at ways to tweak things. And Irene will have discussions with principals that, hey, if we did this just a little differently, it might work better. And even after day one on March 1st, they made some additional changes the next day. And real credit to the, to the kids and the teachers for just being flexible to make those changes and, and continue on each day. So every day is a learning experience. And, and I think every day, we're getting better at that. But lunch has, in, in my eyes, has been really successful.
But I think if you would have judged lunch after day one, would you have said that, Chris? After day one?
No, no, we made, we made lots of changes after day one and after day two, quite frankly. But again, it's, it's, we've made, made some tweaks throughout in all areas. And, and that's an area, I think, that is, that is running well.
And Chris, one other thing, if you could talk, and you mentioned it briefly. I know you mentioned the medical advisory team and their input. Could you talk about how they were involved in the transition from an operational point of view?
Yep. So two members of the medical advisory team went on tours of every building with me. And we talked through, walking around with the principals, looking at spaces, areas that they, they would make suggestions on. And, and just really being inquisitive about how is this going to work in that space? And so we started with the high school, we did the middle schools, and then hit every elementary. And so that tour with them helped them, helped them just really good understanding of how this was going to work. And then they are, are, I don't know if excited is the word, but they are looking forward to additional tours now that we've been all in here for a week and a half. You know, maybe after spring break, just seeing how it's going and seeing if there's any areas that, that they see that, that would be areas of concern or areas of positivity going out. So they, they were very instrumental in just giving us their advice as they toured.
So I don't know if you want to do this here, but center up here, I'll ask. I know there's been a lot of questions or concerns perhaps in the community about the air quality of some of our buildings and the filtration systems and then the other cleaning protocols. So if you could just kind of review with us, like what the heightened pieces are that we're doing, that would be helpful.
So we actually have that on a question later?
Oh, okay.
But I'd be happy, I'll, I'll wait for it later because we're going to address all those things.
So we just wanted to give, give you a sense. It was a huge team effort to get ready for March 1st. And, and we couldn't be more proud of how everyone at every level pitched in to support the process and to get ready for our kids. And so moving on from that, we want to give a COVID-19 update. And so we're going to talk about our current numbers. And so these were updated this afternoon. So we have 17 students who, who are in isolation, meaning have tested positive. Remember, that's what isolation means. We have 307 students in regular quarantine, 43 in modified quarantine. I'm going to walk through those things in a moment so we can talk more about what those things are. 44 who are awaiting test results. For a total of 411 students who are currently not in school. The previous high was on November 16th, and the previous high was 245 students. So as you can see, we are significantly higher than our previous high. And as we talk about questions we are receiving from our families, I would say questions about quarantine in general, from a number of different perspectives, is certainly the biggest topic. So in just a few minutes, we're going to spend quite a bit of time walking through quarantine and how quarantine works and where it's been and how it's changed and how we've followed that. So that is certainly coming in just a few minutes. You see our staff numbers as well, though. Our staff numbers have dropped and will continue to drop. Just as a reminder, the final members of the staff will reach the full efficacy of their vaccine this coming Saturday. Those are the staff who have been vaccinated. And again, as a reminder, we do not have a record of who was vaccinated and who was not. But we are, but, but we do know we have a number of staff members who wanted to be vaccinated but who could not be because during the time of the vaccine clinics, they were on quarantine or, or, or in isolation. And so we are awaiting guidance from public health of when they're going to be eligible. And so as soon as we have that for them, we, we will be sharing that with staff. And so again, these are the current numbers, and I'll pause here for questions from the board.
I'm just curious, is it a handful or a couple dozen folks that are-
We don't have an exact number. How would you, Karen, would you help me? How many do you think it is? The, the, the staff members who won a vaccine but haven't been able to get it yet?
I would say we've had, we've probably had at least two dozen people who were impacted in that first round of shutdown time period that were not able to.
Paul, what's the breakdown of students, like by elementary, middle, and high of quarantine?
The majority of these students are at the elementary level. Do you have the breakdown, Karen? These numbers were quickly changing because, quite frankly, Gina was putting kids into quarantine the, the all afternoon. And so at some point, we just drew the line and gave you the numbers. The numbers could be higher now, I will be honest, because Gina's been working through that. And I think one of the things that Gina would want me to say and the doctors on the medical team would, would want me to say, the pandemic is not over. And our behavior in the community and at home and in schools, all of those things are very important. And so masking and distancing and not having the large gatherings, all of those sorts of things are incredibly important. And we'll be talking about that in just a few minutes. And I'll be mentioning those things in my weekly update to families as well. But those things do matter. So we're, we're going to have to stay vigilant.
And when we talk about the people awaiting test results, are those test results in connection to exposures at school? Or we don't really know, we don't make that-
So right now, again, exposures to school, we don't have information on that yet, Jenny. It's really, we haven't been back in all-in long enough to tie this to an exposure in the classroom. Because again, it takes time for all of that to, to, to work its way out. So we're going to be meeting with the medical team again on Thursday. They will get the full update on numbers as of Thursday. And they're going to be digging into those along with the folks who have partnered with us at, at Ohio State. And they'll be giving guidance to us based upon the numbers they are seeing, if there are any additional steps that they think we need to take because of these numbers.
And do you see the capability as we are, continue to be in school longer, to be able to track if, like, there is spread actually happening in school? Because that may, make-
Typically, in the pro, in the process, and Karen, you stop me if I'm wrong, please, because Karen is more directly a part of the contact tracing work than I am. But typically, as a part of the contact tracing work, we, in some cases, do, do get a sense of where the exposure occurred. In some cases, we don't. Is that a fair statement, Karen? You want to add to that, please? Yep.
Yes, so obviously, if we notice that there are cases popping up in a class that maybe had a case within that seven-day prior window, we, we would certainly, that would trigger some attention.
One of, one of the things the doctors always ask Gina is, are we seeing spread in the, in the class? So it's just what Karen just said. So there's a positive, positive case in the classroom, and then there are the quarantines. And how many of those students who are placed on quarantine then subsequently test positive? And that's something we have not been seeing throughout the, the pandemic. And we hope we don't see. But again, it's something that we closely monitor.
But right now, it's like too soon to know?
Yeah.
Because we only are seven days.
Seven days into all-in, seven school days into all-in.
Correct.
Correct. So I want to spend some time on quarantine. Is that okay? Because I think we're getting lots of questions. And so if we go to the next slide. So let's start with what is a close contact, okay? A close contact who is anyone who is within six feet or less of someone diagnosed with COVID-19 for a total of 15 minutes or more combined total time during the day. And that starts two days prior to symptoms, okay? And that has been the definition from Franklin County Public Health. I'm have Karen kind of come up. She's going to tag team with me on this and move the slide, sorry, Karen. Maybe Laura, you could help with the slide so Karen can stay up with me? That'd be awesome. Thanks, Laura. And so again, that is the definition of a close contact. And Karen, that has been the definition of a close contact throughout the period of the pandemic, okay? So that definition has remained the, the, the same. You're going to see, other things have changed. But that definition of a close contact has been the, the same. So we get a lot of questions about, why does this quarantine guidance keep changing and has it shifted? And the reality is, it has. And so we want to talk about the quarantine guidance we have received from Franklin County Public Health and show you this on a timeline. So going back to the fall, when, when there was a close contact at, at school, we had to, we had to quarantine kids from school for 14 days and also 14 days from their athletics or the extracurriculars. Then in December, that actually changed. And the quarantine number of days at school went from 14 days to 10. And every time there was a change, we would get an updated guidance document from Franklin County Public Health, who is working closely with the, with, with, with the Ohio Department of Health. Karen, are we good so far?
Good so far.
Okay, next slide, Laura. So then January is where we saw some, even, even so, so, some more changes. So in January of 2021, the study, and this is a picture of the cover of that study, came out. And it was commissioned by the Ohio Department of Health. And if you would blow that up, you would see that there were a number of institutes of higher ed who were involved in that study, including Ohio State. And that updated guidance, for the first time, introduced this concept of a modified quarantine. And so that came out in January, okay? And then if you go to the next slide, Laura. So then on February 12th, we got updated guidance from Franklin County Public Health that referenced the new guidance from the state and put this topic or put this new standard of a modified quarantine in, in, in place. So when we got that guidance on February 12th, it talked about a modified quarantine means that a student who was placed on quarantine as a close contact was going to be on quarantine in all parts of their life, except they could keep coming to school.
And that's only if the exposure happened in a school, classroom setting, not in athletics or in a social setting after school.
Okay, so we got that. So modified quarantine, I want to pause here. A modified quarantine as of February 12th was you are identified as a close contact in a classroom setting. You are allowed to keep coming to that classroom during your 10-day quarantine period as long as you don't have symptoms. But, but, but you can't do anything outside of the school day. And the parents are asked too, that that child is on quarantine when they're at home as well. So, and during that period of time, they are still on quarantine from sports for 14 days. That's of February 12th.
Can I ask a quick question? So on February 12th, if the guidance hadn't changed on what I see as February 21st, right now, we have 307 students or you're updated in quarantine. Whatever number of those had happened in school, according to the February 12th, those kids could have been in modified quarantine except for February 21st?
Some of them.
Some of them-
If their exposure was in school.
Yeah, as long as their exposure was in the classroom. If they're a close contact in a sport, for instance, or in their home, they would not have been a part of that. So that is what modified quarantine was as of February 12th. Then as of February 21st, we got additional guidance from Franklin County Public Health that said you were only eligible for modified quarantine if during the contact tracing, it is determined that you were at least three feet from that positive case. Meaning if you were closer than three feet, you had to be in the full quarantine. And if you were between three and six feet, you were eligible for the modified quarantine if the exposure was in the classroom. That happened just a couple of days after the parent webinar that, that we had, to put that into context.
Well, and I'll even note, the guidance document on Franklin County's website is dated February 21st, which is a Sunday. It was posted to their website and we learned, and we were told about it on that Thursday. So the parent webinar was the 22nd, and kind of in that, that period in between.
So we didn't see it till Thursday. And we did consult, I will tell you, we did consult with Franklin County Public Health. And I talked directly to the health commissioner prior to the parent webinar because we had heard- heard that changes could be coming, and I wanted to know if those were done and if those were coming. And they just weren't there yet. And so, quite frankly, they didn't know what was going to happen or not happen. And so at the parent webinar, we went with what we knew at the time. Because quite frankly, we weren't sure if that change was going to come or not. It did. And obviously, we are following that. So throughout this whole time, from the beginning of the pandemic until now, when it comes to how we've handled quarantine, we have followed Franklin County Public Health guidance throughout the entire time. But that health guidance has changed. And that's not, that's not to say anything bad about public health. It has changed as they have learned more. But we have changed with it as it has changed. So is it a confusing process? Yes. Are there many questions? Yes. Do I understand why there are many questions? Of course I do. But I wanted to take some time and just walk through the progression this evening for you. So we do know that at the state level, they are talking about more updates moving forward. And so there could be more updates to the quarantine guidance coming. And if those happen, then we will, of course, change how we put that into place. I just have to say a huge thank you to Gina and all of our nurses. I cannot explain to you what a heavy lift this has been for them. And they have done a great job of keeping up to date on it and making sure we're following the guidance. And as they have questions, they always reach back out to Franklin County Public Health just to continually confirm that we are, in fact, following that guidance. So I'm going to pause there, because I know this is a big topic, and I want to give it plenty of time for all of your questions.
I wanted to ask, what does Franklin County Public Health mean by three feet of distance and six feet of distance?
Well, that's a great question. And so they will not answer that, nor will the Ohio Department of Health. I worked hard to get a definition of three feet and was told that neither one of those groups were willing to put that into writing. The only thing I was told is that the medical director for the Department of Health at the state level had stated in a meeting, this is secondhand, by the way, I don't want you to think I heard this, I did not, it was shared with me by a health department official, that the medical director had stated that while he would not put it on writing, in writing, he assumed it was nose to nose or mouth to mouth. And so that is the standard we are currently using to measure that distance. And so as that contact tracing work occurs, that is the standard we are currently using, mouth to mouth or nose to nose.
Is there any, would there be any justification? I'm just thinking about, there really, it's hard to think of where it would come from, but the original studies about done with six feet of distance or the, or how far things, how far you'll have us need travel, would those scientific papers possibly use the six feet? And so as nose to nose and that, I just don't know what the, what any rationale might be, but that's what I was thinking.
I have asked that question and continue to ask it, and I will continue to ask it, Carol.
Thank you.
And so there's, are, how many places are we, I mean, obviously, there's places where we can ensure the three to six feet because we have people on modified quarantine.
So what I want, I want Chris to speak to that, because he was so involved, and you know Chris, by the way, when I say involved, he was moving furniture himself. So he's going to be able to answer this and give kind of an overview of how that's working. Chris, want to do that?
So I'll just kind of go by levels. You know, at the high school, I would say a majority of our classrooms are in that three to six feet range. At the middle school, I think our principals have worked really hard with our teachers to accomplish the three to six-foot range, but it's not as high a percentage as you would see at the high school. We have more tables at the middle school, and I think you have more situations where you're trying to determine, is it, is it a better situation to be facing each other and be greater than three feet or to be shoulder to shoulder and not facing each other? And so we have more situations at the middle school where we are less than, less than that three to six feet range, I would say, than the high school. And at the elementary, just by the nature of elementary students in general, and by the nature of our new furniture that is part of our new buildings and our renovations, I would say that a majority of the elementary classrooms are less than three feet.
We have tried to be very clear on this point, and you have never heard us promise that we can maintain three feet of distance. And we've tried to say that again and again and again. And we will continue to say that. We will strive for that. And everywhere where it's possible, we will have that. But as you just heard from Chris, it's not possible in all the situations. So that's a great question. Thanks, Jenny.
I do have one more question, sorry, about the elementary piece. I know that as we've had positive cases in the elementary, those classrooms are moving to EDL. And are we putting the entire class into quarantine? Or is there any way to kind of drill down in there to see if there's kids that, while they would be in EDL, wouldn't, would have never been considered a close contact and then therefore wouldn't have to be quarantining other than the fact that there are classes online? I don't know if that's.
Yeah, so what I want to do, go to the next slide, hang on a second. So what I've done in this next section.
Okay, sorry.
What I've done in this next section, there are a number of questions that we keep getting, right? And so what I've done is tried to capture these in the PowerPoint. And what I want to do now is just walk through these one at a time. And Jenny, you picked the first question, okay? And so this is one we have had certainly a number of times. And again, Karen and Andy can help me with this. Andy can help with what's going on from the educational part, and Karen can help with the quarantine part. But Jenny, the answer to this is, it depends, okay? So what happens is, there's a positive case at the elementary level, and then the contact tracing will then occur. And everyone who has been closer than three feet for more than 15 minutes, cumulative time, stop me when I'm wrong, Karen, is then put on full quarantine for the 10-day period, meaning they are home. If there were students who were between three and six feet, then they are on modified quarantine for those 10, 10 days, meaning they can come to school but can do nothing outside of school. And then greater than six feet, obviously, they are fine and not on quarantine. There have been a number of times when through the contact tracing, it has been determined that the entire class has been closer than three feet to that positive case for more than 15 minutes. And when that has occurred, the entire class has been put onto full quarantine for the 10 days. And so then that entire class is in enhanced distance learning for that period of time. So Karen, you want to add to that? Is that?
Yes, that's right. And we have had some cases, too, where part of the class was put into quarantine, part of it wasn't, and then we just found ways to educate both parts of the class.
And I want Andy to talk about that specifically. Well, we're going to get to that question, aren't we, buddy? So you just stay right there, okay? So Jenny, that is the answer. So sometimes that has happened because of the contact tracing has determined that the entire class is a close contact of less than three feet.
Yes, just to clarify, if you, and maybe Andy's going to speak to this, but if there were, I guess I'm thinking about in that elementary level, like if, let's say it's a very small number that wouldn't be in quarantine, like educationally, would it make sense for that whole class to be in enhanced distance learning for continuity of education?
So we have one specific situation that I think I can point to, and Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a situation where we have, I'm going to just make up numbers here, right? So two-thirds of the students were considered a close contact, and so they are learning from home via EDL. The teacher is also delivering from home the enhanced distance learning because they're, they feel well enough, obviously, to be teaching, or obviously, we wouldn't ask them to. And then we have a small handful of students in the building that are being monitored by a sub while the teacher then can do enhanced distance learning to all those students. So that's just one snapshot of an example.
So I think the answer to, Jenny, just to add a little bit more to that, we don't want to send any child home unless they're a close contact, right? And so we will find a way to keep them at school. But it could be a modified experience at school, like in that example. Next question.
I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Sorry. So who's speaking to the students to determine that? So if you could kind of walk me through, we have a suspicion, and then we walk through that whole contract tracing.
Karen, you want to just walk through, and Karen is involved in this on a daily basis. So Karen, why don't you just walk through kind of the steps of how this plays out?
To the best of my knowledge, sure. So if we're sticking at the elementary level, it's obviously largely an adult situation. So the word of a positive case would go usually either to the principal or directly to Gina. And they reach out to the parent, learn all of the, you know, the details about when the, when symptoms started, all that stuff that we need to know to start the contact tracing. And then it, we work with the teachers, Gina works with the teachers, to learn exactly like, well, how is the classroom set up? What was, what happened on the days that would have been in the student's infectious period? You know, really digging into what activities were done, if there was, say, a small reading group pulled together, where were they sitting, which students were involved? And then she really digs down to find out who meets different criteria, above six feet, you know, the three to six feet, and so on and so forth. So that's how it's done at the elementary level. When you get older and the kids are in more individual sports, you have all those different teachers to talk to. Of course, at elementary, you need to talk to the related arts and those kind of folks as well. When we get older kids, then there is talking to those students who are indeed positive and saying, okay, now we need to know, who have you hung out with? Who, you know, what are the types of activities have you engaged in that we need to follow up with these students?
Okay, next slide. Been getting this question, other school districts, and I've been listed, Hilliard and Dublin have been listed as specific ones, are promising three feet of distancing, why can't we? So I reached out to Hilliard and Dublin, and they said they are not promising that. They are using the same language as we are. They are doing their best, but they're not able to promise three feet of distancing. So that's a quick one to answer, but I've received it enough times. I just wanted to put it up there and let you all know, I reached out directly to the leadership of those districts to find out what they were doing. You all know that we're working with neighboring districts constantly, and we have been for the last year, sharing best practices back and forth. And so all of us have relied upon one another, and that's been a positive thing, obviously. Next question. Why do the quarantine rules keep changing? This is a, this is one of the top 10 questions, and I think I've illustrated that. And so it just shows me that we get these questions so often, we have to keep talking about it, and we have to keep putting the information out. We have to find more and better ways to put the information out. It is complicated, but we have to do a better job in this area. We understand that. And so we will continue to talk about quarantine and continue to talk about why it keeps changing and how it impacts our families. So we will, we will keep going on that. This is one I got recently, too. I guess there was a news conference, well, there's many, the governor has many news conferences. And he had stated that studies show there's virtually no spread of COVID-19 in schools. And he had, he was referring to the modified quarantine that we're now doing in the state of Ohio. And so some of the folks watched that news, news conference and thought anyone who was a close contact in a classroom should never be quarantined, and thought that's what the governor was saying. And so again, just to be thorough, I reached out to the, to the governor's office. That was not what the governor was saying. The governor stands by the guidance from the Ohio Department of Health, which I just shared, meaning a close contact from three to six feet is eligible for the modified quarantine. And less than three feet in the classroom has to be on full quarantine. And the official stated that when a governor's talking in a news conference like that, he has to speak in general terms. He can't dig into every detail of the quarantine guidance. But it was a great question, and I wanted to make sure that we responded to it, because I know lots of folks watch the governor's press conferences on, often. So, next question. What are we doing to improve ventilation in our schools, Lori, some of which are very old and outdated? So this is the question you asked, and Chris wanted to talk about this for a bit. Chris?
All right. So I would say it's like a multi-layered approach and lots of different approaches to it. The CDC has lots of recommendations that we are following. And so let me just kind of go through some of those. So to start out, first of all, at the elementary schools, with the exception of where Windermere is and Old Wickliffe, we have all-new systems in those buildings. And so high-efficient systems that are using both the MERV 8 and the MERV 13 filters, which is recommended by the CDC. We are changing our filters quarterly as they recommend, so keeping in our eyes on those filter changes. One of the most important things is bringing in fresh air from the outside. And so we have maximized that on all of our systems throughout the district, is bringing in, bringing in that fresh air. Another thing that, in full transparency, is new for us as of last week. The CDC recommends opening windows and keeping doors open to the classrooms. We had not been doing that prior. You know, the CDC also, in their recommendation, says, be careful when you're doing that because of other health situations that could cause, that could affect students in the classroom. And so last week, the principal's got notification from us that, that they should, you know, advise staff, if they want to open their windows, they can. But I want to be very clear on that, not all of our windows in our, in our buildings open. You know, for example, I'll use Tremont as an example. The renovated area on the second and first floor have windows that can open. The new area in the kindergarten wing does not have windows that can open. And so not every staff member has the ability to open windows. And there's rooms at the high school that are in the middle of the high school that don't have windows. And so, you know, just to be clear, while we're moving forward with windows being open, and I saw some at Jones today, just looking, looking out at Jones, a handful of windows open, not every building has the ability to open every window in the building. The other thing we did is we're running the buildings 24 hours a day, so we're not, we're not dialing back. The CDC recommends, hey, get your systems running two hours before you get people in there. We are just running them continuously, and so keeping our set points throughout, throughout that 24-hour period. And then one of the last things that we did recently is actually ongoing right now, and I'm going to look at my notes, because it's like the longest word in the world to say here. But the photohydroionization that we have done, implemented, retrofitted into our systems with the help of Air Force One, it's the same systems that COSI is doing to their HVAC systems in order to purify the air through the use of ultraviolet rays. And essentially, what it does, the purpose of it is to create outdoor-like air in the indoors. And so it's, as the air is flowing through, through the vent system, it's the very last thing that it hits in terms of this UV light system that kills all bacteria that's coming through that system. And it's a very effective way to handle not just this pandemic, but any type of bacteria or anything that could be in the air. And so we have implemented that. It is installed at Greensview, is installed at Wickliffe, is installed at Tremont. The Barrington install starts tomorrow. The middle school installs will happen over spring break. And we've been fortunate that Air Force One was able to get their hands on these things quickly and get them installed. The two schools you're not hearing me saying are the high school in Windermere, which is Old Wickliffe. We are not installing on those buildings. Those buildings are going to be torn down in three months. So we're maximizing all the other efforts that I spoke about earlier at those buildings. In addition to at those buildings, and some of them were delivered just today and yesterday, in the larger areas where we're eating and congregating, we've bought large-capacity air purifiers for, you know, that cafeteria, gym area at Windermere, the learning center areas at the high school. And I think those were just installed today. And so those are how we're treating some of the larger areas that aren't able to get the photohydroionization for those buildings. And then those, so it's that multi-layered approach for all those as it relates to the HVAC.
And I think just to highlight one of the things you said, because it's a question that we're getting, and it's a good question. If you go back to the OFCC study we had done, where we got the results back in 15, 14, 15, they actually called out two buildings that we're currently in. they actually called out two buildings that we're currently in as having outdated systems that needed to be replaced, and that is Windermere or the old Wickliff and high school. So we have gotten questions about that, and you heard Chris respond to that. I don't know if you want to say anything else specifically about those two buildings that we've gotten questions about, or?
Yeah, I think at those two buildings, we just have to maximize all those other mitigation suggestions from the CDC, and we're trying to do that.
But it'd be a true statement to say, what we're able to do at those buildings is not the same as what we're able to do at other buildings.
Very true.
Okay. Just want to be transparent with where we are on this, so.
Just a question about the high school. I know you said that there is air purification in some of the common areas. Do we have any plans or thoughts about those classrooms that have no windows? Interior classrooms or?
Yeah. So there, there's been, I think, a lot of suggestions and/or, hey, let me buy a, let me buy a air purifier for that space. And while we're super appreciative of that, I, I think it also could put us in a situation of this classroom has it and this classroom doesn't, like an inequity situation. And so we have not taken advantage of those generous offers from people that say, hey, I want my child's to have this thing, I'm willing to buy it and bring it in. I think specifically what you're talking about, Jenny, possibly could be a different situation because they don't have windows that they can open. And I think that's something we could look at, at the high school on those select classrooms that are on the interior, those handful of rooms that used to have windows at one point. Remember back from our assessment in 15, but when the courtyard got closed in, they went away, so.
And Chris, you still have MERV 13 filters in those areas, and you can run your air 24 hours a day?
Yeah, yeah, we're running 24 hours a day. In those areas, they're probably MERV eight, Scott, to be, to be transparent. The MERV 13 is, is limited throughout the district. We did just install MERV 13 in the, in the gymnasium at the high school because part of the governor's new sports order requires you, when, when feasible, to put those in that athletic arena. And so we ordered those and got those installed on some really old units there at the high school.
Chris, why don't we just really quickly, or maybe Scott, you want to take this, by the way? We should probably mention what MERV eight and MERV 13 are.
So I'm not going to pretend to be an HVAC expert on that.
Scott, do you mind taking that for us?
Well, I, no, I can't specifically do that, but it's just, it's a greater filter that.
Okay.
And, and the drawback for, from the more, the highest, the higher filtration causes a drag on the air, and so that's probably the reason why you can't do the 13s in those areas. You can only do the eights. But I'll tell you, even MERV eight is tremendous from the ones you can buy at Home Depot, you know, and that kind of thing, so, yeah. It's good.
And I should, I should take a moment, you know, as we're talking about HVAC. We are really fortunate to have some maintenance techs that are really skilled in the HVAC area, you know, specifically, again, all of our techs are skilled, but, you know, Jason Simpson and Phil DeRoche and others that are so knowledgeable of that topic, constantly looking at suggestions for us to, to, to do things. And they're the ones that figured out that we can do what the governor's asking in terms of the varsity gym at the high school for a short period of time.
Lori, the other part of your question, I want to make sure we don't lose it. You also asked about cleaning, I believe, and so I'll let, have, give Chris an opportunity to respond to that as well.
Yeah. You know, much, much like everything we've said tonight, the cleaning has been a team approach. While we've put a lot more on our custodians in terms of spraying and wiping down high-touch areas like door handles and restrooms and, and things like that, you know, it's, it's been a team effort within the classrooms of spraying down between class changes, you know, at the older level, when age appropriate by, by the kids themselves, and then handing a, handing them a, a towel or a paper towel as they, as the next group walks in to wipe it down. At the elementary level, it's really being done mostly by our teachers and our, and our aides in those classrooms during the lunchtime, and really focusing on hand washing and hand sanitizing. That's one of the things the medical team continued to preach that as, as kids were coming back to emphasize, you know, the, the use of the hand sanitizer and when, when available, actually just washing, washing your hands. And so, again, the custodial team has, has taken on a monumental effort of increasing the cleans throughout the day in, in all sorts of areas, whether it be with foggers or, or misters. You know, as we take down those tables in, in between lunch, lunch and the next thing that's coming in there, you know, I see the high school custodians spraying things off, and then the table gets broken down. And so happening at all levels as consistent as possible, and when they're not being pulled for something else, someone else is stepping in and, and helping.
This is a good time for other questions for Chris about the operational side of the House.
Can you talk a little bit about, has the, since we've been all-in, students are closer when it comes to busing? What, what changes have we made to our cleaning protocols?
Well, I think, I'm glad you brought busing up, Carol, because we've had a lot of questions at certain schools about the crowdedness of our buses. And, and we have a lot more kids riding busing now, obviously, than we did in hybrid. And it took us a week, the first week and, you know, into this week to realize who's going to be taking the bus. And we are sitting, sitting two to three to a seat, in a lot of cases, three to a seat. And picture yourself as a fourth or fifth grader who, who is a little bigger than that first grader, right? And, and so three to a seat at that age level is, is tough. But, you know, our, our drivers are following the same protocols they did during hybrid, you know, cleansing and spraying down seats after each trip before they go to pick up the next, next group of kids. And we are able to provide the transportation as, as the state is, is, is requiring, but we do have some crowded buses, and we are in fact using some drivers and some buses from VAT. So we've brought in some additional drivers to help with that. But like every community around or every school district, finding bus drivers is always tough. And so our drivers are doing a great job adjusting to different kids showing up each day. I think typically the after-school route is probably a lot less than the, the to-school route. And for, and I'll use Windermere and Wickliff as an example, you know, with Windermere being, being over next to Wickliff for this year, we have a lot of new kids that have never ridden the bus because they used to be walkers to Windermere. And so I, I think that situation specifically, we've had a lot of questions and concerns about maybe kids standing on those buses. That is not happening. I think it's pretty crowded to be, in, in honesty, but our drivers assure us that no one is standing during, during the route.
Dr. Hatton, you're up. We've got a couple of questions for Andy. The first on the screen, how are students keeping up academically during quarantine?
Yeah, so each, as I've stated before, because this question came up prior to all-in, and the answer, the response was case by case, and that still is the answer. Because as Jenny, with your question, when we contact trace, you know, and I want to paint a picture just a little bit about elementary specifically, we need to look at which students are going to be, you know, the modified and which students are a typical quarantine. And then if it's, you know, in need of a better term, the cleanest way to help keep the kids up is if the entire class is on quarantine and then the teacher can deliver EDL. When it splits, it becomes challenging. But even with the, when I said the clean component, I want, I also want to state that the related arts teachers are impacted, the intervention specialists, the related services, because the schedules were once again redesigned for all-in. And now that we have, you know, growing numbers of quarantine, it continues to place a, a bit of a stress on the teachers to deliver those services, which they are doing. It just, you know, is going to take a little time. And I think that we just have to acknowledge that because teaching in both worlds and both realms, if you will, asynchronous and designing asynchronous and synchronous while trying to either deliver EDL or kids that are in the building is just presenting problems. But the teachers are doing a, a tremendous job with it, but it just, you know, it's a lot. Six through 12 is a little bit easier at this time because we are able to maintain more of that distance. But again, it's just going to be case by case. It's not the, you know, it doesn't, it isn't just one classroom that goes out in a middle school or high school, of course, because they change classes in, in the block. And so it really is going to be case by case.
Next question, Andy.
Yep.
Andy, you, you mentioned the online academy was already at capacity as far as intervention services. Is this still the case, and how are we meeting the needs of students who transferred into the online academy?
Yes. Hey, my name's on this one. All right, so.
You're famous.
I know.
Yes.
And I don't pronounce seven-syllable words after five o'clock like Mr. Potts. I can't, I cannot do that. Yeah, I mean, we were at capacity and we still are, because as I stated, when we did the pathway changes, we designed as tightly as we could to provide the least amount of disruption for students and staff. And so one of the things that we were fortunate on, on this one, Dr. Engel and her team were able to look at the students that left the online academy and were coming in, and then with some creative scheduling, it was able to work out. We were able to make it work. And we want to emphasize publicly and to the Board of Education that students with exceptionality, students on IEPs are receiving their services. There, there's no mechanism for us to not deliver those services, so that is happening.
Questions for Andy while he's up. Thanks, Andy. Next question, has the medical advisory team discussed the impact of the new variants? And so it has, it has come up, but I will tell you, there has not been a deep discussion on that topic. The next time the medical advisory team meets is Thursday afternoon, and we will make sure that that is on, on the, the agenda, obviously. They were spending, in recent weeks, their time was being spent working with us on the transition to all-in. And I know this is a topic that they need to dig into and we need their guidance on, and so we will keep you posted as they do that. Next question. Can we add quarantine numbers to our COVID-19 data dashboard? And the answer is yes, and we will do that. But I want to make sure we're clear on this, and Karen, you can help me, I don't want to overpromise. So we will update that once a week, but understand, that'll be a snapshot in time. Because just as we were preparing the numbers for tonight on the number of students in quarantine, the number I gave you is probably already wrong. Correct? And so we will give you an update once a week, but understand that, that, that number's always shifting. So we'll make sure as we place that number on, and then people can see it go up or down, but it, but it'll be a snapshot in time. Does, does that make sense? And we'll word that on the website so people know what it is and the limitations of it. Anything we should add to that, Karen? Okay. Okay, next question. What would trigger a change to all-in learning model? I've also gotten, I'm sorry, what would trigger, yeah, so what would take us back to hybrid or take us back to the, the, the enhanced distance learning? And so you all know this, but I just always like to respond to these questions. We've gotten that question a fair amount. And so obviously, we work with the medical team, and they are constantly bringing advice to the board. But the choice to change learning pathways, as you all know, rests solely with the board. And so we will make sure that we say that and make sure that that word is out there, but we've gotten that question a number of times. Next question. Do we have plans to implement a COVID-19 testing program? Again, we have talked to the medical team about that. They have not given us any, any recommendation on that yet, but we will continue to bring that forward. And if they do make a recommendation for that, we will bring that to you for your consideration, but we're not there yet. Next. Is the district completing contact tracing within 24 hours? And the answer to that is typically yes, but there have been times when that has not been able to happen. Do you want to add any more detail to that, Karen, so we're fully answering that question?
I'll just say, to the best of my knowledge, there have been a few cases where there have been some outstanding threads that were followed up based upon the positive cases' condition and how their ability to provide information outside of that 24-hour window.
Next question. Are we worried about cases going up after families travel for spring break? And yes, we are. I don't know any other way to, 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 to say that. We are worried about that. We will continue to encourage families to make good choices. I know a lot of families are traveling. So in the weekly update, we will certainly mention the states that our state has identified as states that if a person visits, that they need to quarantine for 14 days after, after, after returning home. Understand that there is not any mechanism to enforce that, but that is guidance from the state. Those states are updated every Wednesday. As we sit here tonight, the states are Idaho and South Dakota, Iowa, Alabama, Kansas are the states that are currently on the list. But again, it's updated every Wednesday. But again, whether we're staying at home or whether we're traveling, masking, distancing, hygiene, staying out of large groups, those are, those are critical things to really stop and control the spread of this. So again, we will cover those things in my weekly message that this week's going to come out on Thursday. Quite frankly, because so many people travel, we think by Friday, they're already going to be gone. But are we worried? Yes, we are.
Are we also trying to convey the message, or are we conveying the message in your, in your message on Thursday? That when someone comes down with potential COVID and gets tested, that even though they're away from school, we still want them to report it in a timely fashion?
Correct.
Like when they know, let us know.
Correct, yes, and we will make that clear.
Thank you.
Yes, we'll encourage people to do that. That's the end of the questions I had. So what I want to do here, before we move on to our next topic, is any other COVID questions that you would like us to respond to this evening, so?
So I would just like to say thank you on, for the quarantine information. It was one of those things that I thought of intrinsically, you know, it's like, it seems like this is changing an awful lot. And you just nailed it, you know? So I appreciate just having that in writing and maybe even being able to share that with parents and community.
And we will do that. Thanks, Scott. Lori?
Just one follow-up. Did we get comments back from Franklin County Public Health on the restart plan?
No, we did not.
Because we submitted it, right?
Yeah. So we had to submit it, and we got no comments back. No.
Okay. Do we anticipate getting any?
I, I asked for comments multiple times, and we did not get them back. So I.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that I anticipate any comments at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I did confirm that they have it, and they received it, though, Lori, so I did, yeah.
And Paul, just to clarify, and that, that was the requirement, was to submit it, but?
Yes, yeah, Jenny. So we were required to, to submit the plan. They don't have any authority as far as approving it or not. We just have to give it to them, and then they are asked to provide any comments to us. But they aren't required to provide comments to us either. But they are not an enforcing authority that can tell us, and you all know this, they can't tell you as the board, you have to be in a specific learning pathway. They don't have the authority. Well, they have not exercised that, that, that authority. I should say, they, they do have that, that, that authority. They could shut down the schools or send us, but they have not exercised that. And I think as they've stated throughout the pandemic, they, they do not intend to exercise that authority.
So I was just going to ask the board members, does anybody need a break yet? I know Paul's getting ready to introduce somebody else, right?
Well, I've got another topic and then another couple presentations.
Oh, you do, okay.
Anytime you all want to break, it's great.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Okay. So, so the next topic, I want to begin talking about what's after the, the pandemic. And, and I'm really excited to be able to start talking about that. It's not over yet, clearly, and I don't want to give the impression that it is, but we have to be planning for that. And so I mentioned earlier how throughout the pandemic, we have been working with neighboring districts to share best, best, best practices and share the load. And so what we've done is we have partnered with Dublin, Hilliard, Grandview, Westerville, and Worthington. And we have been meeting to have And we have been meeting to have, have, have discussions about a framework for life after the pandemic and beginning this summer, which is not going to be life after the, the pandemic. But as, but as we begin to talk about moving out of that, how do we continue to meet the needs of our kids and our staff with a focus both on, on, on achievement and, and on well-being? And I know one of the things that many people have been very, very concerned about, and certainly this group of six districts is certainly among them. There could be a push as we move into the summer and we start to move out of, of the, out of the pandemic, not to focus on the well-being of kids and just focus on content. Okay? So we know there are gaps. And what we don't want to do is just take a whole bunch of content and try to shove it down the throats of our kids and catch up as quickly as possible before we take care of the well-being aspect of our kids. As all of us know, and you guys have talked about it a lot, our parents have talked about it, the pandemic has been hard on everybody, right? And we have to make sure before we can teach our kids, and this is a part of the strategic plan, before we can teach our kids, they have to be well. And so as we're talking about moving forward and talking about a framework, and I'm going to show you some, some things here in a minute, we, we, we want to focus on the well-being first and then on the academics. And so as you move to the next slide, again, this is just a framework and work we have done together. I think one of the most difficult parts of it was to find slides, and all of us are sharing these same slides with our boards, and we were trying to choose slides that didn't have anyone's school, school, uh, colors on them. So that was, took, took a bit of time. And so what you're going to see me do to tonight is just outline the framework, and then at your April meeting, we're going to be spending time talking specifically about what the summer is going to be looking like. Okay? So this is just meant, meant to be an overview. But again, as a framework, we actually wanted to define what does, what, what, what does this look like? And so again, we talk a lot about supporting students, both academically and from a social and, and emotional point of view. And as a part of this, we understand that we have to engage a lot of different people in this work, and you're going to hear more about that in just a moment. And we also understand this is an opportunity to, to, to innovate. None of us want to come out of the pandemic and just go back to how everything was before because we've learned a lot of things. And so what we want to make sure we are doing is capturing all of those lessons and making sure that we are better on the other side of this. Moving to the next slide. And so, as we talk about this, I mentioned a number of things. We understand every one of our students, as well as all of the adults, all of our families, we have all been impacted by this, and we have to, to understand that. And this has been a long year, and it's not over yet. And we're not going to recover from this in a summer. Okay? This is going to take time. We also understand everyone's been impacted differently. So a one-size-fits-all is not going to, 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 to work. We're, we're going to have to assess where each individual student is and how do we meet all, all of their, all of their needs. And so we want to be upfront about this as we talk about moving forward. This is going to take time. It's going to take real time. Okay? And it's not going to be measured in months. And again, we have to be honest about that. And so we talk about, we have to focus, and I know we talk about this all the time here, we have to talk about the whole child. Okay? And we have to realize that they, that there have been lost learning opportunities. But again, those have impacted our, our kids differently, and we have to focus on the mental health aspects of, of what we do. And again, this is aligned with the strategic plan. You all were, were already there, focusing on all of these things even before the, the, even before the pandemic, but the pandemic has made it even more of a need for us moving forward. Next slide. And so again, I mentioned this, that there, there, there have been six districts who have come together just to work on the framework, and combined, we represent over 60,000 kids in the central Ohio area. We are sharing this with every district in, 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 in central Ohio, and we have invited all of the districts in central Ohio to actually join us in this, in, in, in this work. One of the things that we've all talked about is that all of the work we do has to be driven by data, both the academic work and the social and, and, and emotional work. And so as we talked about putting together a framework, it's not one-size-fits-all, so different districts are going to implement this in different ways because our districts have different needs and different sizes, and our kids have, have different needs. And so as we talk about the framework, we, we, we know the importance of customizing it. But we also believe as we move forward in plans, that working together and sharing our best practices is going to serve all, all of us well. And again, in all things, engaging our staff in this is going to be critical to, to the importance because they are the experts in, in these, these things. And as we move forward, that's going to have to be a huge part of the process, just engaging all of those folks in all of our plans. Next slide. And so these are just some of the things. We, we, we really spent time with teams from each of the district, talking about what are the areas that we really have to focus on. And you see, I've talked about the, the, the SEL and academics, but we're also talking specifically about culture and climate. You know, our, our kids have been in different learning pathways, and as we start to move to the other side of this, we have to bring buildings back together. We have to have a very intentional focus on culture and climate. That's something that's just ingrained in the work we do in, in UA already. But again, we have to rededicate ourselves to that work, and culture and climate matter. And then, at the bottom of, of that list, and it is the foundation of this, we have to focus on equity. And we're going to be hearing about that more in, in just a few moments. But the work of equity and the commitment to, 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 to equity is crucial in all of this. Because as we talk about the impact of the pandemic, it's not been felt the same by everyone. And I'll tell you what, the people who have the most needs have taken the greatest hit. Okay? And so as we talk about moving forward, again, it is not a one-size-fits-all. Some kids are going to need more. Right? And that is, that is looking at that equity lens. And so, in everything we do, we have to be focused on that. So all of these are important to identifying how we measure progress moving forward. Moving on. And we know this, and we talk about this all the time, but we, we wanted to be clear on this, this has to be student-centered, right? Everything we do has to be student-centered. And so, we understand that we have some students who are going to need a lot, a lot of, of, of help, okay? And so we have to be ready to, to, to provide that. Some are going to need only a bit of help. I will tell you, we also have students who have been thriving during, during, during this time. And as we look at this, one of the things that Andy would, would want me to mention is we are fortunate that we are receiving funding and are going to be receiving more funding from the federal government that is going to help pay for these programs for our kids. And we are very thankful for that. Andy, would you, I'm just going to pause a minute. Would you want to say anything about the funds we have received to, to, to date, just to kind of give just the order of magnitude? I didn't warn you I was going to do that, but...
Sure. So this, the first batch we got of the ESR funds was, was a couple hundred thousand dollars. But the second batch that just came in is about a million dollars. So that really will impact the summer, and we're actually having some discussions on it right now as we complete all the paperwork to go ahead and have access to those, just of how we'll use it over the next year or two. The ESR funds has allowed us, though, and this is an important part, no matter how much, I mean, no matter how large it is, it's allowed us to make purchases outside of the general fund. So when Chris mentions about like the, the food service and the furniture, like the additional chairs and tables we needed, that was able to be used for, I mean, some of the ESR funds were able to cover that, or the cleaning supplies or some things like that. So, so whatever we get, no matter how big it is, it's been nice to go ahead and have that to offset the expenditures to the general fund.
Thanks, Andy. Next slide. I mentioned this, and I don't want to, I'm not going to spend more, more time on this, but again, we have spent a lot of time in our groups in talking about everything we do has to be driven by the data, and we want to tie it all back to that. And we're talking about how we can share resources to make this an easier lift for, for all of us. And we've talked about some partnerships we can enter into as well to help in this area. So, moving to the next. We know this is important in, in UA, right? So as, as we move forward, I want to stress, we do not have a plan yet. Okay? So that's why you're not hearing me talk about a plan. We're going to be starting to talk about our plans in, 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 in April. We are just talking about a framework for how we're going to do this, this, this work and how we're going to partner with some other districts. But a huge part of this is how do we engage all of the stakeholders in that process and make sure that all of these voices are heard and are able to inform what we are doing moving forward? And that is the student voice and the staff voice and the parent voice and the board voice. But I want to also say that there are some things that are going to need to happen at the state level to allow us to do things that we need to do to innovate and respond are going to require legislative action. And so that is another reason why, why it's important to partner with, with other schools so we can advocate for those needed changes as a group. And as we think about those things, we will reach out to partners all over the state so we can join together to advocate on behalf of our students. And I will tell you that the officials at the state level, I think, are ready to have that conversation. So I don't see this as an adversarial topic. They are already looking to us with what are some things we need to change? What are some resources we need to make available? What are obstacles we need to take out, 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 out of your way? Because there's a great understanding that the recovery from the pandemic is going to take years, not, not, not months. And we're only going to be able to work with our staff and kids on all of these things if we come together. So this part, this part is going to be so crucial in making sure that where we end up at the end of the day is the right place. And it's, and it is one of the reasons that the plans are going to look different from district to, to, to a district because different communities are going to need and want different things. Next slide. So, we, we see this as an opportunity, as we talk about these districts working together, to really talk about how do we, again, make sure that moving forward, we are learning from the, the pandemic and making long-lasting changes for our kids and making sure that our public schools in Ohio coming out of the pandemic are stronger than when we went in. And we think there are opportunities here that we have to seize because this is a once-in-a-century crisis. And again, we have learned many, many things. And we're all so proud of all of our staffs for all they've done and so proud of our kids and our families. But there is much work left because there is much pain out there as we start to, start to recover. So I just wanted to share some of that work, letting you know that you're going to start to hear the, the specifics around process again in, in, in April. So this was meant to be just a quick overview of that work and just a huge thank you to the five neighboring districts who have partnered with us in this work. So we'll pause there for just a moment, knowing again, you're going to hear more in April. Okay. Well, now I'm super excited to introduce Mr. Matt Boaz. Matt has been with us since the 30th of, of, of November, buddy, but it seems like you've always been here, right? And Matt is, been such a great member of, of our team as the, as, as, as the Executive Director of DEI. I will tell you, we have all learned so much from him all, already. And so what, and so what I asked him to do tonight is just share with the Board what he's learned and some of his thoughts about his first months on the job and what is going to be next. And so Matt, I'm going to wipe this podium off, and then, looks like Chris is going to wipe it off, and it is all yours. So welcome, Matt. Thank you.
Remember that guy at the inauguration?
First and foremost, I want to thank all of you for having me here tonight. I really appreciate it. Secondly, before I get started, I'd really like to talk about some people that came to support me tonight. They're on the Equity Advisory Board that was appointed by the district, and I really appreciate them being here. They've been great as comrades to work with, and we're going to do some great things together. So if you could go to the next slide. I wanted to start with some observations that I've made since I've been here. Before I jump right into that, I do want to acknowledge, as part of what we're trying to do in this district, we're trying to make sure that we acknowledge the achievements and contributions of all people in our global society. We're currently standing here during Women's History Month, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my own mother. She's gone from here, but without her, I wouldn't have come and done this work and be in this place right now. So I want to give the appropriate recognition to my mother, who would be 90 this month if she was still with us. Thank you. Thank you. My first observation is, this district has been around, obviously, since 1918, over 100 years. There's a lot of things that have contributed to the culture that we live in. From an outside perspective, one of our values is start with heart. But what I've seen in some cases is, there's more energy channeled from some parents in this district and some people in this district to kind of put more energy into going after each other than supporting our children. And we need to shift that culture. We, we need to make sure that we have a culture that is really, really going to allow everyone to succeed. There's a fable in diversity work. It's the elephant and the giraffe, and it's, it's about two animals that live next door to each other. And obviously, it's an analogy of two people living next door to each other who happen to be different. One stops in front of the other's house, the elephant stops in front of the giraffe's house, and they're having a conversation, and they're cordial neighbors, getting along really well, and they're talking, and at some point, the giraffe invites the elephant in. But the giraffe's house is built for a giraffe. So the elephant tries to squeeze through the doorway, and it's so tight that nails are popping out of the doorframe, and the house is shaking and things like that. And the giraffe remarks, "Oh, my God, you're going to have to lose some weight." And the elephant says, "Well, maybe you should make your house in a way that everyone can come in." Since 1918, we've been building the house, and we built it for certain people. But the neighborhood's changed, quite frankly, with that analogy. If you look at the enrollment numbers in the last 10 years, we've increased Hispanic Latinos percentage-wise have doubled. Two or more races has doubled, actually more than double. When we look at students with ability, learning ability issues, students that identify as having ability issues with learning have increased by more than 1,200% the last 10 years. We have to make sure we're building an inclusive climate, and seeing some of the things that I've seen is not exactly that. In most cases, feel extremely welcomed here, and I think most people would. But if one issue happens, and it's been more than one, it's a setback, an incredible setback in the culture. So we have to work on that. We can't let the urgent outweigh the important. We've been building this for 102 years, 103 this year. We're not going to fix that in 103 days, but we are going to fix it. So I just, you know, we need to understand that it's going to take some time. We're going to have to build some long-term and short-term goals, but we're going to get there. And we also have to remember one-size-does-not-fit-all. Can you change the slide? If you look at this, one of the initial goals of the Board and its commitment to diversity was defining equity. And Paul mentioned equity and our bridge. This slide is just a pictorial version of equality versus equity. Equality, by definition, is same. Equity is leaning more toward fairness. Equity is leaning more toward fairness. And we have to get the tools into the environment for everyone to be able to succeed, and that means whatever tool that person needs. So we have to be flexible. We have to make sure we're not trying to squeeze a square peg into a round hole. And we've got to do some things that are probably different than what we've done in our 102, 103-year history. So sometimes you're going to hear, probably receive emails, people seem to want to do that, that are going to indicate that they don't like something that we're doing, but this is why we're doing it. We're trying to make an equitable environment for everyone. And again, sometimes what's equitable for one is not going to be equitable for another because one size does not fit all. Next slide, please. Some priorities. I've been talking about this since before I arrived. We must be more proactive than reactive. That means we have to really start to address problems before they exist to try to prevent them from either growing into problems. And we must be more transformational than transactional. We can't just fix that identified problem. We have to fix the environment so that the problems are less likely to develop. That requires deliberate activity in all kinds of areas of DEI work and beyond DEI work. That means solidifying policies and practices to create and maintain an inclusive culture, keep DNI at the forefront. Having a dedicated person to try to lead that proactive work, it's basically, I've never done this work without someone who was specifically dedicated to proactively addressing policy issues, training, things like that. When I first started working here, I was sent a list of trainings I had to do, and I understood that. And normally, a compliance person would be the person who's checking that out. But my experience so far working here is we have like 10 or 12 people that kind of take a piece of compliance, but none of us are really dedicated 100% to it. And then you have things where like, one night in particular, I was sitting up trying to help do a letter. I didn't have expertise in that area, but that's how we're piecemealing things together. And if you have dedicated compliance, you're more likely to proactively prevent something than to have to react to the fact that somebody who didn't have expertise in that area had their hands in it and may have not quite done the detailed work that needs to be done. When it comes to DEI work, having that person to help out, to really like, I can generate all kinds of ideas. I can get the Equity Advisory Board, who are all volunteers, to do so much of that work. But at the end of the day, we have to have someone who's making sure that those things are pushed through and making sure they're taking them to the next level for us to have ultimate success. And that's just one observation I've had while I've been here is there's a great team here. I love this team, but we're kind of piecemealing some things together. And it would be probably stronger and probably take less time and be more efficient if we had someone that was a go-to person that, "Hey, can you check on this? You know, do we have this training in place? Can you document how many people got this training this year?" Speaking of training, next slide, please. Well, I want to hit this slide. So diversity, equity, inclusion. A lot of people ask me, you know, what that means, why all three are important, that kind of thing. And I thought this slide really reflected. Diversity is about the people and perspectives. Equity is about the policies and practices and positions. And inclusion is really the power of the voice that creates the organizational culture. Next slide. So when I think of next steps for DEI, we need to place an emphasis on recruitment and retention process. Sense of belonging is really important, and representation matters to students. I went all through school, K through 12, and three years of college before I saw someone that looked like me leaving my classroom. And I can tell you that it had a lasting impact on me. I really probably didn't get excited about learning as early as I probably would have if I could have seen myself even as potentially leading a classroom later in life. I probably would have engaged more earlier in life. But, you know, obviously, I got there at some point, but it was kind of a winding path through the woods. I think I probably would have engaged more had I seen a possibility of becoming that person or connected with that person in a way that maybe want to spend more time with them and get more information from them. We need to expand the curriculum to be more inclusive. That includes resources that we use, the kinds of books we use. The examples we use in class are really important to connect with the students. Creating an educational program for staff, students, community. I talked in my interview about three different buckets I like to put training and development in, raising awareness, developing understanding, and building skill. Despite not, you know, being able to say that lately just simply because we're building a foundation, that is still at the forefront of DNI in the future in this district. There would be opportunities to create different educational programs and put them in those three buckets so that we catch people where they are. But the idea is to move people along a continuum. And I would start with our leadership team, including all of you, and get everybody moving on that continuum with the goal of having everybody in the skill-building area, you know, as many people as we can, except for new employees, of course, because we hadn't had the chance to impact them. But to get as many people moving along that, that's the contagious drive. And then really utilizing our webpage to drive traffic and to make sure that people are able to know what the initiatives are, advertise activities, become a more inclusive community. One of the things that we've done in the short term is, one of our students indicated to us that when they see major events going on, which we see all the time in the news, that they felt like the district wasn't saying enough about issues that impact them on a racial basis, on a basis of sex, disability, you know, under representation. So part of the members of the Equity Advisory Board helped put together a couple of discussions where we were able to facilitate discussions and talk about current issues in society, and those things have gone well. One Equity Advisory Board member put himself out there as an African-American man during Black History Month and allowed students to just ask whatever questions they want. And it ended up being, there were probably as many staff members there as students. I think at one point, we had 40-some people there. And there were a lot of questions asked, a lot of connections made. We're going to continue to do that. We have a panel that we're putting together of a group of women for Women's History Month, March 29. It'll be at the high school as well. I believe that's our location. Don't quote me on that. But we're going to start having those discussions on a regular basis because they make connections and they create an inclusive culture that's part of the building block of setting this foundation and creating an environment where people can feel whole and people can learn and grow and develop. And quite frankly, I think the staff gets as much out of it as the students, and it's really important for us to, and I hate to steal the words, but build those bridges. Those are just some of the things that we're working on. We have a host of things. We have four subcommittees created to advance the work in DEI, and those are not exhaustive lists in terms of subcommittees. We have a lot of work to do. Those subcommittees can address certain things immediately. One of them is information gathering to get data into the process. One of them is to coordinate the efforts of our DEI teams. One of them is to develop and, well, I guess, create a different view for our website. And the other one is to create a calendar of heritage, events, celebrations for people of different backgrounds that will be universal throughout the district and will include different celebrations from people of all backgrounds. And it's a place where people will be able to go see what's being celebrated and try to learn more about different cultures. One of the things that will be included is an explanation of the things included in that calendar. And again, that's not an exhaustive list in respect of your time. I won't go any deeper except for another slide, please. I put this slide on here because there's an analogy I use, and I use it, I'm a sports analogy-type person, but you can apply this to anything. If you think of the people who do whatever they do the best, there's one thing that you'll find that's always present. They do not compare themselves to others. They compete with their best self from the day before. This district has all the resources and all of the ability to set the bar higher when it comes to DEI. I've heard people come to me and say, "Hey, why don't we do what Bexley does? Why don't we do what Hilliard does? Why don't we do..." Fill in the blank. And I'll tell you why. Because I think we have the ability, if we use all of our tools and we get after everything that we have the ability to do, we have the ability to not reach their bar but to set the bar and to be the bar. And that is my expectation with DEI in this district. Thank you for having me tonight, and I look forward to working with all of you. And I'll wait for questions if you have any.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And just, I want to thank the Board of Education. So I think back to the strategic plan that went in place in the summer of 19, which called for us to bring in a dedicated person to focus on these things. Then I think back to last summer. And last summer, with the events going on around the country, school districts around the country issued statements, as did you. But you did a lot more than issue a statement. You took specific actions. And the formation of the Equity Board was one of those. And one of the other actions was you envisioned our DEI position. It was originally going to be an entry-level coordinator position, but that wasn't good enough for you as the board. You wanted it to be a senior-level member of our team so that DEI lens could be a part of everything we do. And that change enabled us to do an enormous search with lots of interest, and we are so thrilled that Matt joined our team and rose to the top of that list of folks. But I want to thank the board for making this a clear focus, making this a priority. Because I'll go back to something I said a few minutes ago, and we all know this, our kids can't learn if our kids aren't well, right? And this has to be a place where every child, every family is not tolerated, is welcomed, is embraced, and is loved. And kids are not going to learn until those things are happened. And we have an amazing staff. We have just, and an amazing community. But we're not there yet. And having Matt onboard to help guide the work is crucial. And all of us understand, this isn't Matt's job. He is leading us, and this is all of our jobs. And so we're just really, really thrilled that he's a part of the team, and I'm excited about the days ahead as we continue to focus on this work and what it's going to mean for all of our kids. So thank you for your commitment as a Board of Education. It's making a difference already, so thank you. And so as we continue on, in a similar vein, Chris is going to give us an update on the work that we're doing with the Litchford family and the cemetery at the high school. So, Chris, it's all yours. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks for allowing me the opportunity, again, to be up here to give you this update on the Litchford family cemetery. And if you think back to, you know, 2015 is when we started planning, started planning this initiative to renovate or rebuild our building. And at that time, no one was talking about the Litchford family cemetery. You know, the community was gracious enough to pass the bond issue in 2017, and in 2018, we started this planning process and going through the planning process. And the central office got a call at one point saying, "Hey, I want to talk to you about this book, about Secrets Under the Parking Lot," and some things that may be there. And so that really initiated the conversation about the Litchford family cemetery that used to be on our site where the high school is. That cemetery was removed in 1955, when the board was building the new high school at that time. And as we started to learn about this story, I think one of the things that was evident was that you guys, as a board, were committed to doing whatever possible to make this right and to make this situation right with the cemetery that is on the property where the high school sits today. And so as we worked through the planning and we worked through moving into construction, we started taking those steps. And we hired archaeologists and did reviews of the areas where we thought the cemetery was. And as you guys know, and as the community knows, we found remains there at the high school. And so as we have had discussions about those remains and have we have made connections with the community and made connections with the descendants of the Litchford family, you guys have a board have stuck to, "We are going to do what's right, and we are going to make sure that this cemetery, that this property is honored the way it should be honored." And so that's why I'm here tonight to talk to you and share with you some of the progress we have made as it relates to how that cemetery site will be honored on our new high school site. And so as you go to the next slide here, you will see, you know, a snapshot of the site plan at the high school. And that yellow box there is where we have had a professional company come out and survey and look at all the documents as it relates to that cemetery, and that is the outline of that cemetery. And as you can see, it sits right there where we were proposing to put the parking lot here for the new high school, part of a parking lot. We have three different parking areas at the high school, and I'll talk about that here shortly. But, you know, one of the things that has been a part of all of our discussion is that we can't pave over this sacred land again. And we really need to do what's right by this cemetery and by this family and by the Litchford descendants that were a part of the history of Upper Arlington and a big part of that history. And so what we did is we worked with MKSK, who is our landscape architect, and talked to them about how we could honor this site. And with some of the goals in mind of, you know, we don't want parking on that cemetery site. We want it to be a place where people can come and honor that site. But we had some restrictions as well. As you can see, it's right there at the south end of the building, and it falls right where the fire lane needs to be for fire trucks and ambulances and other things that come to the building. And so we really charged MKSK with giving us a concept that we could develop further as it relates to the site. And so the next slide is going to show what they've come up with here. And so as you look at this, as you look at this site, you really just see a large gathering plaza there at the south end of the building. What MKSK has done a really good job of doing is making a connection to the building and to the practice fields there to the right, you know, so you have a safe passageway over to the practice field. They've also, I think, done a really good job, and again, this is a concept that will have to be developed further, but they've done a really good job in creating, you know, this Plaza Commons area, you know, for the whole entire community to enjoy, but also for, you know, 2,000-plus students and staff to use during the day. And so they've worked hard at just putting their ideas together. As you will see there by that blue outline, that is the mode of transportation for whether it be fire or other type of service vehicles. And so they've maintained those important safety features that have to be close to the building. And they've really provided, I think, a connection to the building and a place to honor the Litchford family cemetery on that site. And so that, the next slide as well, just kind of shows the plaza-type feel, the park-like feel that would be created here at the high school. And then the next slide as well just shows another view and angle of that. And so later on tonight, there's an action item for you to consider where we would move forward with MKSK to further develop these designs. as well as the associated cost to, to do this. Now, I want to point out, and, and this is important part of this, right? So you're staring at this thinking, we're losing a lot of parking. And that is absolutely right, and I want to own that, that, that by honoring the site, which is the right thing to do, we are losing parking. So let me talk to you a little bit about what that means for parking. So the current site before construction had 583 spots. That's not counting Brandon Road and Mount Holyoke. So parking lot spots both shared by students and staff, okay? The site plan that was developed before, before we started working on honoring the Litchford site had 590. So we were increasing our parking by a whopping number of seven spots. And so as we look at this, as we look at this rendering here, and now MKSK will need to have, further refine it by putting in this, this plaza, this important honoring of the Litchford Cemetery, it is a reduction of 83 parking spots. Eighty-three parking spots that would most likely be used by students. Just being upfront and transparent here. So that would take our number to the site to 507 compared to the 583 that we had at the current high school. One important thing to point out on this, though, is that through our partnership with the city and our great work with the city, they are going to be redesigning parking on Brandon Road. And that work will start June 1st. And they'll be paying for this and be finished for the start of the school year. That will add, that will have 130 parking spots down Brandon Road. Those will be perpendicular parking spots facing east on Brandon Road. Prior to our construction starting, now, I think the last two years, we've had the construction entrance on that road, and there's been no parking on Brandon Road. But prior to that, that construction starting, there were 87 spots on Brandon Road. You know, I think our kids found ways to make more than 87 at times, but by, by how closely they parked to each other and learned how to parallel park. But, so this, through the partnership with the city, they're increasing that from 87 on Brandon Road to 130. And so when you, when you circle back to those 83 parking spots, but adding 43 more on Brandon Road, it's really 40 parking spots less around the site. So just trying to be, just spell out there where we are on parking. The other thing the city is, is, is studying is, are there, is there the ability to, like they've done on Northwest Boulevard, paint spots on Zollinger Road for some parking on Zollinger Road? But we will have three main parking lots at the high school. There'll be one on Zollinger Road where the new front door is. There'll be one on Mount Holyoke Road by the tennis courts and the softball field, excuse me. And then there'll be this, this one on Brandon Road. And so, you know, we're here before you tonight to answer any questions you may have about this. We have shared this with the Litchford family. And we've shared it with the committee that, that has been working with us about how to honor this cemetery site. But wanted to, as I said earlier, bring forward tonight an action item for you to consider later in tonight's meeting to work further with MKSK. Are there ways to, you know, limit the parking reduction, but still honor this site, but to develop this further and have this, have this part of our, our site plan moving forward? Questions?
Can you flip back to the, the overhead that looks to where, how? Yeah. Chris, where will students come out to use this space from? Help me in my mind, understand where they exit. What does that mean?
So right, that larger box that you see on the left-hand side is the pool. And below that is the main south entrance to the building that takes you onto Golden Bear Boulevard and, and into the school. And so I think students would be coming out of that main south entrance there. And, and either, you know, if they say they have a practice happening, you know, heading across to the practice field, they could be coming out on the east side of the building where we have a plaza for outdoor dining between the tennis courts in the building and circling around back this way. So there's various exits they could be coming out, but probably the south one where that little indention is right there on, on, on the rendering of the building.
I mean, I'm thinking about this in relation to the, the square of property where it's kind of too muddy and boggy in front of the administration at the high school to really hold an outdoor class. Could this be, and could, could a class meet there? Could, could it be, you know, incorporated in well-being and thoughtfulness at that space?
I, I think definitely a class could meet there. As you see there, there's some site furnishings within the hardscape that, that have tables where a class could meet there and hold a class on nice days. That large green area, you know, even today as we try to get kids outside with their, with their teacher doing work, you know, it could be a place where you're just sitting in the grass doing, doing work to get, doing work as a class. But it's definitely, it's definitely the addition of a really amazing park-like plaza to be utilized by staff and students, you know, you know, when the weather's nice. But also the community to come and learn about, about what used to be on this site and, and to honor this site.
Would, will there be history elements? I know that we've been talking about having a history timeline of some kind. Will there be history elements incorporated in the design to, to be a focus for thoughtfulness and as well as learning about our, our whole history?
Yeah, I think it's an opportunity to tell the story for that site. And, and we're, we're really excited that Resili Construction and Moody Nolan have come to us wanting to partner to pay for the signage that would happen on this site that, that honors the cemetery. Of course, our, our first priority would be working with the family about what that, what that signage and what that history is told. But it's definitely a place where that will happen that, that explains, you know, why we have this plaza here at the south end of the building.
Last summer, when this was, when the excavation was going on, I was able to talk to one of the family members and say just how devastated I am as a, as a board member, but as a community member to know that this happened. And he was just super kind and said, you can only do what you can do. You can't, you're not responsible for what went before. You're just doing what, what you are able to do at this moment. And so I feel really positive about this design. And we've had a lot of feedback back and forth in the, in the facilities committee. And I just, it's very important to me as, as part of this community and maybe other, I hope other people will, will feel it when it, when it comes to fruition, that this is a, a healing space for all of us to come together.
I mean, it, it really is, it's well said, Carol. It's, it's an opportunity to, to tell our, the full story of Upper Arlington. And so, you know, I think Andy would probably want me to say this. You know, probably what comes to mind when you think of this is, you know, we have to consider this as part of our, of our change orders. And, and how do we, you know, how do we pay for this? It's through that, through those funds that we've set aside for the unexpected. Yes. Yeah, so what we've asked MKSK to do is put together a projected cost. Now, there's a lot of things that go into this. Resili is going to have to be providing deducts for what they were going to do in that site to begin with. And so MKSK has put together what they believe are the, are the projected costs to create this plaza, plus the deducts. And so, you know, they're estimating around $140,000 to $150,000 for the construction of this plaza. That does not include the soft costs. So you'll see in that resolution that is there that we have, we've added 25% for soft costs. That is estimated a little high. But as I talked to MKSK, as they've worked on special projects like this with Ohio State and others, they usually budget between 25% to 30% of the cost. And so with the outdoor furnishings and everything, you'll see that in that resolution there, I'm asking, asking for approval to move forward with not to exceed costs on the construction and the site furnishings of $200,000 and the soft costs of $42,500. And so those are the two things that are in that resolution. Certainly, the goal is to come in below that. And I think we're being really conservative in those numbers with the idea to come below that. But again, it's, it's with, with the idea of, of, of creating this, this special place that honors the Litchford Cemetery.
You just mentioned something, and that brings to mind, this isn't going beyond the budget. Doing, doing this, we are, we're still well within budget, even though this is an unexpected thing that we're dealing with.
Yeah, I think you're going to, you're going to hear from Andy a little later when he talks about where we are with the construction budget, which is, we're in a good place, and we're in a good place with our change orders. And so, and, and later on tonight, I will also be sharing what those change orders have been lately on, on various projects. But again, we don't have a mechanism to go over budget. You know, we have to stick to our budget. And this is part of what we budgeted, not necessarily for this, but we budgeted for unexpected changes.
Thank you.
So, Chris, I love the, the layout of this. And I can see lots of students milling about, right? We've heard from lots of them on well-being issues, that they don't have a place to go and kind of collect themselves and re-center. So I think this is fantastic. I can just see them really taking ownership and putting their stamp on it. And teachers as well, and other staff members just to kind of, even though you're still on campus, but just get away for a minute, right? So I love it.
Chris, do you know how big the green spaces there in the middle? Like how wide it is, if it is wide as a park?
I don't, Scott. I'd be guessing.
I was just looking at the parking spaces, and it looked like there were about 12. So that would be, you know, 90 feet or more, maybe.
Yeah, it's, it's, we looked, we looked at a lot of different.
Nice size.
Yeah, we looked at a lot of different concepts. And this seemed to capture everything in terms of the connection to the practice field, the connection to the nadatorium, front plaza there. It just kind of feels like it was meant to be.
So again, there'll be an action item later on your agenda this evening. We'll ask you to make a decision on that. So thanks to Chris for all of his work on that and, and the team of people who've been working on that as well throughout the last number of years. And so this time, I'm going to introduce Dr. Jenny, who's going to talk to us about our student life review and where we are with that. And then, yeah, you should, yeah, you should do this so Andrew can use that one, so.
Just so exciting to see the connections between everything that's being presented tonight. Back in August of 2019, you as a Board of Education called for a student life review. We brought together a committee of 37 individuals that represented staff, students, community members, and most importantly, to really focus on our student life for our extracurricular, co-curricular, and athletic opportunities that are important to the student well-being, part of our strategic plan. So as a part of that, we are very excited to share that they delivered after year one a number of recommendations. The work of the student life review was focused on three areas, which was, which included structures, safety, and wellness, resource management, and accountability. So within the first year, we spent a lot of time delivering what are the goals for both structures, safety, and wellness. And starting this fall, we'll really focus on the resource management and accountability piece of the student life review. So as a part of all of that, we are excited to give an update on some major things that are happening this spring related to some rebranding of our athletic department, expanding that into be all-inclusive for student life, and then just some restructuring in terms of the leadership of that group. So Andrew's going to tell you more about that.
Well, thank you, Dr. Jenny. Thank you, Board of Education, for having me tonight. I'm really excited to present some of the updates we have at the high school. I know it's been a long night for you. I know you were hoping to go to, take a break here a little while ago. But I'll make it brief for you this evening and answer any questions you may have. But I brought up with me Mr. Spencer Smith, who's our Assistant Athletic Director right now. And I just want to thank Dr. Jenny for her leadership over the course of the student life review. So first and foremost, what does student life mean? Student life is a term that I think we stole from Ohio State. And it just can, it is, it encapsulates everything that students are doing outside the classroom that are associated with the high school. So all of our extracurricular activities, which would include our athletics programs as well as school-sponsored clubs and activities, in addition to our co-curriculars like music, band, orchestra, I'm sorry, vocal music as well. And then under that umbrella as well falls some of our student-run clubs, okay? That are necessarily sponsored by the high school, but students start a number of clubs. So the review started last year, and we had representatives from middle schools, from the high schools, parents, administrators, teachers. And we really dug into those two, those different aspects that Dr. Jenny mentioned. And as we went through this program, or as we went through this review, we looked at it, at it in totality and serendipitously. So I want to take a step back from that. So we're reviewing student life in Upper Arlington. And at the same time, Spencer Smith is, who I said is our Assistant Athletic Director, he's been in the district for, I think, five years. Started as a middle school athletic director and moved up to the high school a couple of years ago. The typical role of the Assistant Athletic Director has been to oversee some of the high school clubs and activities that happen. It wasn't necessarily the director, the athletic director's position, it was the assistants. And I want to tell you, Spencer Smith has knocked it out of the park. I know Andy Geisfeld can attest to this, what he's done in just in terms of some of the budgeting and getting alignment with stipends and supplementals. But we really, through his leadership, have come a long way in bringing those clubs. For example, our First Robotics, Speech and Debate, fencing, you know, clubs that aren't necessarily filling a stadium Friday night at the moment, right? But are really important to a lot of young people that go to the high school. And so Spencer has really, through his leadership, has a lot of, brought a lot of organization to those programs. And as we were going through the student life review and the work that Spencer has been doing, it really made sense to us as an organization, as a high school, to rebrand the department from the athletics department to the Department of Student Life to broaden the, the, the supports that we have for more programs, to support more kids. And Dr. Emhoff will be recommending, with my support as well, will be recommending that Spencer Smith is named our Director of Student Life beginning in the 2021, 22 school year. And so we're really excited about this rebranding. We think it's going to be, I think Spencer, Spencer is the right person for this job. I will tell you that if you've ever seen him in an athletic event or in the hallways, kids flock to him, and he flocks to kids. And I just couldn't be more proud of the work that he's done and the work of the student life led by Dr. Jenny. And so that is my recommendation to Dr. Emhoff. Well, I know he's going to be making that recommendation to you tonight. I know that's an item for you to vote on today. So with that, I want to pause and see if there's any questions for me. Can I bring Spencer up to say a couple of words? Thank you.
I'll stay here so we don't have to, to clean. I just want to say thank you for your time and your commitment to our, our kids. That's obvious to everybody here, how much you care. And, and the people in these rows and the people behind me, how much they care about kids. That's why we're all here. So thank you for that. Also want to say thank you to the members of the Student Life Committee. There's between 20 and 30 members of the community, staff members, who have dedicated a lot of time and energy into finding out how we can do this best for our kids when we talk about student life. Also want to say thank you to Tony and Logan, our, our Athletic Director and our middle school Athletic Director, and their commitment to our kids because we know how important the athletics are to them and to our community. And when we, when we think about student life, and Andrew and I have had some conversations, there's three things that come to mind. The first one being, how do we develop and foster relationships between our kids, our students, and staff? Our goal is for every kid to be connected to something outside of the school building. We have so many kids that are so passionate about sports. They're passionate about their clubs. And if we don't have something, they're passionate. clubs, and if we don't have something they're passionate about, we give them the opportunity to go and create that passion and to bring others along with them. So as we think about building relationships with our kids, we want to be able to make it as easy as possible for kids to be involved. And number two, building skills. We know that outside of the school day, there are so many skills that our kids can take on with them, not only to college or to their careers, but for the rest of life. And number three, just creating memories. We want, we know that when they look back on their time, we want them to look back positively and then give back to others. So as we think of student life, not just in sports, but our clubs and our co-curriculars, it's just an awesome thing to be able to put attention towards every single kid and to find something where they can be connected to the school and to the community forever. So just appreciate your time and your thoughts as we move forward, and to make this thing really something that school districts will look around and maybe adopt for themselves. So again, thank you for your time.
So Spencer, I have a challenge for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So get some elementary kids involved there. You know, we've got high school and middle school, but they've got crazy wild ideas. So as it folds into your plans, don't forget about them.
Absolutely. No doubt. Thank you.
And you know, Spencer, I was going to say, that kind of fits pretty well into the work that the school districts are doing together, that bridge to achievement and well-being. And boy, that fits right in there. So, you know, this is just a really great, exciting time for you to be taking this to the next level. This is going to be really great. So we appreciate that. And Andrew, we appreciate your comments as well and your support to make that happen.
Yeah, so we are, so as you know, Tony Pushterri is retiring at the end of the school year, and Spencer filling in this new role. We are, we are really excited to start a search process for an assistant director of student life, you know, stepping into the position that Spencer once held. And so we are really committed, talking about, you know, the work of DNI, you heard Matt talk about recruitment and retention. We are really committed to doing a wide search, creating a really diverse pool of candidates for this position, and selecting a candidate that can help move this vision and this culture along in the right direction. And so we're really excited about that, and we're hoping that posting comes out soon so we can get moving on that work, but we're really excited about it. So end of year celebrations, I want to update you on some of the work that's going on at the high school. And I apologize in advance, some of this work is slow to roll out, and there's a number of reasons to that. COVID is the obvious one, but the other reason is we like to spend time with the kids to make sure that we're doing things the right way and the way they want them to be done. So I want to talk specifically about graduation weekend and prom. So for graduation, we met with a representative groups of seniors to talk about their hopes and dreams for graduation, seeing what their, the class ahead of them went through, and COVID, and all the restrictions and guidelines that are in place right now. So number one priority for us, and this is through the students, is that we want to have a graduation at Jerome Schottenstein Center with the full class and all families in attendance. We know that that is not necessarily written in stone yet due to COVID guidelines, and we're working with Ohio State on kind of that ever-changing landscape, on, on the numbers of people that they're going to be allowed to have in their venue. So if that is not a possibility, the next rung down would be to have a live graduation with the whole class and their families at Marvin Morehead Memorial Stadium on our campus. And that came, that came directly from our students. So that's the second piece. If, for whatever reason, we're not able to do that, whether it's too many people, you know, we'll have Franklin County Public Health look at our, look at our plans. But if that, if we don't get the feedback we want on that, we will do smaller graduation ceremonies to make sure that every one of those students can walk across the stage. It may take us longer, but we're committed to doing a number of those graduations if the other two don't work out. In regards to...
I have one favor.
Yep.
So we have been in contact with, with Ohio State. The current information we have from them, we continue to work with them. As you know, a lot of the local school districts use the Schottenstein Center for graduation. What we're hearing right now, and again, subject to change, is that we will be able to use the, the facility. We've got to still finalize dates and times, because they aren't going to be able to have as many ceremonies during the day as typical, because of the cleaning and sanitizing that has to go on in between. So for instance, on the Sunday that we would normally have our ceremony, there are four ceremonies booked on that day. We are typically first, and then the three doublings. And so they don't know that they're going to be able to offer four on the same day, so we might have to look at dates. Fair, Andrew? The other thing is, looking at the capacity of requirements, Ohio State is saying right now, it looks like it'll be capped at 3,000, including the graduates. And so it would be a ticketed situation, which would also likely hold true if we were in the MARV because of the requirements for capacity limitations in large gatherings. If, if the information we have right now holds steady, and it may not, we would have more capacity at the Schottenstein Center than we would at the MARV. And luckily, that's what the kids want. So we will do everything in our power to use the Schottenstein Center and honor what the kids want, obviously, but I just wanted to give you a sense of some numbers there.
Yep. Just a couple other things I want to mention about that graduation weekend. So we'll check out dates, we'll try to stick to that date that we've had in stone the best we can, but we want to make sure that we, number one priority is being in the shot. The other thing, and not surprisingly, that the class of 21 wants to do is to have a parade. And so, so we owe that all to the class of 20, who led us in that direction last year. So in lieu of a graduation, we did a parade, which turned out to be an amazing thing for those students. And so the class of 21, they watched and they learned, and they're excited to do something very similar. Maybe not exactly the way we did it last year, we'll talk to them and how we incorporate that maybe into that weekend. We will work with the city as well on doing something like that. In regards to prom, we have, we have canceled our, our reservation at the convention center, and so we're not going to do an event that serves a bunch of food and those type of things. So I met with our senior class officers just last week, and they want to do something at the high school, and they want to have a senior prom, okay? And I think they're right. This group of kids did not get to have a prom last year, and with the combined junior and senior class, we're looking at a lot more restrictions in terms of numbers of kids. And I think our, I think we really owe it to the class of 21 to make sure that they have a, some semblance of a prom. And so by reducing the numbers, we think we can really do that for them. So our plan is to do that at the high school, and we may get tents, have them outside, we may do things inside, depending on what the guidelines, what we're allowed to do, what the kids want to do, they have some creative ideas. Having maybe a red carpet where the kids come in and, you know, come into the event and such. But we're looking at the, towards the end of May is really when we're looking. And so we've had a number of dates, we've looked at that Friday, I think it's the 28th, we've looked at that date, but we got to coordinate with, with some of our student life activities to make sure all kids can attend. And we'll work with the kids on the details, and then we'll send those details to the Franklin County Health on, and get their feedback on those. So I am recommending, based on the kids' feedback, that we do a senior prom this year, and then we'll work with the class of 22 next year on if we want to keep that tradition or if we want to change it in the future. Any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you. I think it's so important, especially for our seniors, to have those end-of-the-year celebrations and to have engaged the kids and get their ideas, and just to make sure that happens, I think, is just really great. My only question, and I don't know if we've gotten there yet, I know the class of 2020, you know, did not get that in-person graduation, and I don't know if we've started to talk about that, or if that's a possibility, or where that process sits.
Yeah, that's a good question. So I spent a lot of time with, with a lot of the representatives from the class of 20 in the springtime, leading up to graduation, and we set a date. So we have a Zoom meeting coming up after our spring break, I think towards the end of March, where I'm going to be reconnecting with those students to talk about, to revisit that conversation about having a graduation ceremony. And I'll be very honest, if they want to have it, if they still want to have it, you know, then we'll, we'll make it happen. You know, if they want to do something else, we'll try to make that happen as well. And so, but I have that meeting coming up in March, and I'm going to let those kind of class officers and those student leaders who I had met with last spring kind of keep us, keep leading us in that direction.
We, we, we made that promise to the class of 20, and we're going to follow through on that. And so whatever they want to do, we're going to be there, aren't we, buddy?
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah. You happen to remember that? Do you, Dad? Okay. You know, the other thing I wanted to mention, too, is there are other end-of-the-year celebrations, other celebrations at the high school and in other parts of the district, whether it's fifth grade clapouts, or eighth grade graduation, or, or awards assemblies, or final concerts, or we could go on and on and on. And so we haven't forgotten about any of those things. All those things are important, all those are milestone events. And so we will be working through those things with public health, with our medical team, and we will be committed to finding ways to offer those experiences for our kids and families. So just wanted to mention that. And just a huge thank you to Andrew, and a welcome to Spencer, and just great things going on at the high school, and wanted you to have the opportunity to hear more about that directly this evening. So Andrew, Spencer, thank you. And that concludes the superintendent's update for this evening, Mr. President. Yes.
All right, if the board can hang in there, I think we'll hear from the co-presidents of the Upper Arlington Education Association now.
members. My name is Michelle Johnson, and I am one of the UAEA co-presidents. I've been employed in the district for 19 years. I am here this evening to raise a concern that is of public interest. UAEA is responsible not only to advocate and represent our members, but to also serve as a voice for our students. We would be remiss if we didn't take this opportunity to raise an immediate concern regarding the board's decision to return to all-in learning. In the CDC's most recent guidance for school districts released on Friday, February 12, the CDC clearly states that the two most important factors for schools to consider when returning students and staff to the buildings are social distancing and the ability for all to wear masks. As our individual school building staff are working with administration and students in the all-in model, our concerns about the inability to practice social distancing have been confirmed. In the vast majority of situations, we are not able to maintain either six feet or three feet of social distancing. It is imperative that the board publicly acknowledge and address that social distancing guidelines cannot be practiced and are not in place. We implore the board to engage in frank, open, and public discussions regarding our inability to provide a socially-distanced learning environment for our students for as long as we are the all-in model for the remainder of the school year. We ask that a public forum be held to address community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break, and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to actively, interactively participate. Thank you for your time and attention this evening. I have been employed in the district for eight years. I am here this evening to raise a concern that is of public interest. We echo the concerns raised by the UAEA co-president this evening. In addition to what has already been raised, the membership of UAEA is also concerned about the potential impact the return to all-in learning can have on the Upper Arlington community as a whole. Recent research released by the CDC shows the two most important factors for a safe return to school are social distancing and the ability for everyone to be masked. As you know, we are not able to provide a socially-distanced environment in our building. We implore the board to engage in frank, open, and public discussions about our inability to provide what science has determined is the most important environment for students and staff. We ask that a public forum be held to address community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break, and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to interactively participate. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
Good evening, school board members, administrators, Upper Arlington community members, and UAEA members who may be watching this meeting at a later date. My name is Sarah Beckman, and I am one of the UAEA building representatives at Greensview Elementary. I'm speaking on behalf of 35 members of UAEA who work with me. I have been employed in the district for 22 years. I am here this evening to raise a concern that is of public interest. We echo the concerns raised by UAEA co-president this evening. In addition to what has already been raised, the membership of UAEA is also concerned about the potential impact the return to all-in learning can have on the Upper Arlington community as a whole. Recent research released by the CDC shows the two most important factors for a safe return to school are social distancing and the ability for everyone to be masked. As you know, we are not able to provide a socially-distanced environment in our building. We implore the board to engage in frank, open, and public discussions about our inability to provide what science has determined is the most important environment for students and staff. We ask that a public forum be held to address community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break, and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to interactively participate. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
Hello, school board members, administrators, Upper Arlington community members, and UAEA members who may be watching this meeting at a later date. My name is Erin May, and I am one of the UAEA building reps at Tremont Elementary. I am speaking on behalf of 51 members of UAEA who work with me. I've been employed by the district for 17 years. I am here this evening to raise a concern that is of public interest. We echo the concerns raised by the UAEA co-president this evening. In addition to what has already been raised, the membership of UAEA is also concerned about the potential impact the return to all-in learning can have on the Upper Arlington community as a whole. Recent research released by the CDC shows the two most important factors for a safe return to school are social distancing and the ability for everyone to be masked. As you know, we are not able to provide a socially-distanced environment in our building. We implore the board to engage in frank, open, and public discussions about our inability to provide what science has determined is the most important environment for students and staff. We ask that a public forum be held to address community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break, and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to interactively participate. Thank you for your time and attention this evening. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
Hello, school board members, administrators, Upper Arlington community members, and UAEA members who may be watching this meeting at a later date. My name is Elizabeth Ingram and I am one of the UAEA building representatives at Windermere Elementary. I am speaking on behalf of 34 members of UAEA who work with me. I have been employed in the district for 15 years. I am here this evening to raise a concern that is of public interest. We echo the concerns raised by the UAEA co-president this evening. In addition to what has already been raised, the membership of UAEA is also concerned about the potential impact the return to all-in learning can have on the Upper Arlington community as a whole. Recent research released by the CDC shows the two most important factors for a safe return to school are social distancing and the ability for everyone to be masked. As you know, we are not able to provide a socially-distanced environment in our building. We implore the board to engage in a frank, open, and public discussion about our inability to provide what science has determined is the most important environment for students and staff. We ask that a public forum be held to address the community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to interactively participate. Thank you for your time and attention.
Hello, school board members, administrators, Upper Arlington community members, and UAEA members who may be watching this at a later date. My name is Ted Hamilton. I am one of the UAEA building representatives at Wickliffe Progressive Elementary. I'm speaking on behalf of 41 passionate and dedicated educators and members. I have been employed in the district for four years. I'm here this evening to raise a concern that is of public interest. We echo the concerns raised by UAEA co-president this evening. In addition to what has already been raised, the membership of UAEA is also concerned about the potential impact that the return to all-in learning can have on the Upper Arlington community as a whole. Recent research released by the CDC shows that the two most important factors for a safe return to school are social distancing and the ability for everyone to be masked. As you know, we are not able to provide a socially-distanced environment in our building. We implore the board to engage in frank, open, and public discussions about our inability to provide what science has determined to be the most important environment for students and staff. We ask that a public forum be held to address the community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to interactively participate. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Hello, school board members, administrators, Upper Arlington community members, and UAEA members who may be watching this later in the, some evening. My name is Pam Meadows and I am one of the UAEA building reps at Hastings Middle School. I am speaking on behalf of 54 members of UAEA who are dedicated educators and staff. I have been employed in the district for 23 years and I am here this evening to raise a concern that is of public interest. We echo the concerns raised by the UAEA co-president this evening. In addition to what has already been raised, the membership of UAEA is also concerned about the potential impact the return to all-in learning can have on the Upper Arlington community as a whole. Recent research released by the CDC shows the two most important factors for a safe return to school are social distancing and the ability for everyone to be masked. As you know, we are not able to provide a socially-distanced environment in our building. We implore the board to engage in frank, open, and public discussions about our inability to provide what science has determined is the most important environment for students and staff. We ask that a public forum be held to address community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to interactively participate. Thank you for your time and attention this evening. Thank you.
Hello, school board members, administrators, Upper Arlington community members, and UAEA members who may see this at a later time. My name is Carl Kirkpatrick and I'm one of the UAEA building representatives at Jones Middle School and I'm speaking on behalf of 56 members of UAEA who work with me. I've been employed in the district now for 25 years and I'm here this evening to raise a concern of public interest. We echo the concerns by the UAEA co-president this evening. In addition to what has already been raised, the membership of UAEA is also concerned about the potential impact the return to all-in learning can have on the Upper Arlington community as a whole. Recent research released by the CDC shows the two important factors for a safe return to school are social distancing and the ability for everyone to be masked. As you know, we are not able to provide a socially-distanced environment in our building. We implore the board to engage in frank, open, and public discussions about our inability to provide what science has demonstrated, excuse me, has determined is the most important environment for students and staff. We ask that a public forum be held to address community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to interactively participate. Thank you for time and attention this evening.
Hello, school board members, administrators, Upper Arlington community members, and UAEA members who may be watching this at a later date. My name is Damian Wagner and I'm one of the UAEA building reps at Upper Arlington High School and speaking on behalf of 123 members of UAEA who work with me. I've been employed in the district for 16 years and I'm here this evening to raise a concern that is of public interest. We echo the concerns raised by UAEA co-president this evening. In addition to what has already been raised, the membership of UAEA is also concerned about the potential impact the return to all-in learning can have on the Upper Arlington community as a whole. Recent research released by the CDC shows the two most important factors for a safe return to school are social distancing and the ability for everyone to be masked. As you know, we are not able to provide a socially-distanced environment in our building. We implore the board to engage in frank, open, and public discussions about our inability to provide what science has determined is the most important environment for students and staff. We ask that a public forum be held to address community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to interactively participate. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
All right, do we have the president of Opsy, chapter 201 here? Okay. So, we've been at it since about 4:30. So, we're going to take a quick five-minute break, recess, and we'll be back. I know you've been here a long time too, but just hang in there and we'll be, we'll be right back.
Can we make a, take a motion?
I'll take a motion, please. Second. All right, call the roll.
Aye.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Mackenzie?
Aye, motion carried.
Turn it off. Let's put it back here. Oh. The battery isn't...
Oh, thank you. I will, I will. Thank you.
We got, we got, we got, I mean, were those all people signed?
We still have eight more?
The question is, do we do the 40 minutes? I think it is. You know what, just do it.
Oh, you want me to do it? Just spell it out? Been here all night anyway.
I don't know.
Well, you know, let's go ahead and do it, just to go.
Okay, all right.
Typically, typically I'd say no, but let's go ahead and do it.
Typically, typically I'd say no, but let's go ahead and do it.
I have been employed in the district now for 25 years and I'm here this evening to raise a concern of public interest. We echo the concerns raised by UAEA co-president this evening. In addition to what has already been raised, the membership of UAEA is also concerned about the potential impact the return to all-in learning can have on the Upper Arlington community as a whole. Recent research released by the CDC shows the two most important factors for a safe return to school are social distancing and the ability for everyone to be masked. As you know, we are not able to provide a socially-distanced environment in our building. We implore the board to engage in frank, open, and public discussions about our inability to provide what science has determined is the most important environment for students and staff. We ask that a public forum be held to address community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to interactively participate. Thank you for your time and attention this evening. Thank you.
Hello, school board members, administrators, Upper Arlington community members, and UAEA members who may be watching this at a later date. My name is Damian Wagner and I'm one of the UAEA building reps at Upper Arlington High School and speaking on behalf of 123 members of UAEA who work with me. I've been employed in the district for 16 years and I'm here this evening to raise a concern that is of public interest. We echo the concerns raised by UAEA co-president this evening. In addition to what has already been raised, the membership of UAEA is also concerned about the potential impact the return to all-in learning can have on the Upper Arlington community as a whole. Recent research released by the CDC shows the two most important factors for a safe return to school are social distancing and the ability for everyone to be masked. As you know, we are not able to provide a socially-distanced environment in our building. We implore the board to engage in frank, open, and public discussions about our inability to provide what science has determined is the most important environment for students and staff. We ask that a public forum be held to address community concerns. We request that the public forum be scheduled prior to the start of spring break and that the community forum be organized in a format that allows for any individual to interactively participate. Thank you for your time and attention this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have the president of Opsy, chapter 201 here? Okay. So, we've been at it since about 4:30. So, we're going to take a quick five-minute break, recess, and we'll be back. I know you've been here a long time too, but just hang in there and we'll be, we'll be right back.
Can we make a, take a motion?
I'll take a motion, please. Second. All right, call the roll.
Aye.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Mackenzie?
Aye, motion carried. All right, well, we have come back from our recess and we are ready for the public participation portion of our board meeting. And so, before we begin, allow me to ask you, someone to make a motion to suspend the 30-minute limitation on public participation so we can go longer than 30 minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Geisfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
And Mr. Mackenzie?
Aye, motion carried. As I mentioned, we have reached the public participation portion of our meeting. So, each person who has registered for public participation will have up to five minutes to address the board. We will start by asking you to state your first name only for the record. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. I wish to remind everyone that state and federal student privacy laws prevent the district from disclosing information related to any student and you will not be permitted to discuss individual students during this public participation. Andy, we're ready for our first person.
Okay. Our first individual will be Mike.
Before I get started, I just, I coached here in this building a month ago and just learned that I'm pretty sure we did not execute the quarantine properly. We should probably share that with the families who I had to send the messaging to and I, and I feel badly that I didn't know that we did it the wrong way. So, I think we should expose that. Okay, my five minutes. In the spirit, Matt, in the, in the spirit of being proactive and Spencer and, and how important extracurricular is, I'm here to talk about Franklin County and what they say about athletes and their ability to wear masks and their ability to be distant at active practice. So, let me just read it to you. To minimize the risk of coronavirus transmission, athletes should wait 14 days of symptom monitoring have passed to return to active practice. People in athletics don't talk about active practice. There's a reason they put that word in there. They should wait 14 days to return to active practice or play as they would not be able to be socially-distanced or wear a mask. I can assure you, people that play lacrosse and baseball and softball can wear a mask. Major League Baseball players wore masks through entire games last year. So, let's talk about what it means if you guys go along with us. And I am asking that you would add an action point tonight and not honor this 14-day quarantine for athletes. What it means if you do that is it means you separate kids from their teams and their teams from kids for 14 days. There are kids right now, there's a, there's a kid yesterday that you asked to leave a team for 14 days.
All right, well, we have come back from our recess. And we are ready for the public participation portion of our board meeting. And so before we begin, allow me to ask you, someone to make a motion to suspend the 30-minute limitation on public participation, so we can go longer than 30 minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Geisfeld.
Aye.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Trent.
Aye.
And Mr. Mackenzie.
Aye, motion carried. As I mentioned, we have reached the public participation portion of our meeting. So each person who has registered for public participation will have up to five minutes to address the board. We will start by asking you to state your first name only, for the record. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. I wish to remind everyone that state and federal student privacy laws prevent the district from disclosing information related to any student, and you will not be permitted to discuss individual students during this public participation.
Andy, we're ready for our first person. Okay. Our first individual will be Mike.
Before I get started, I just, I coached here in this building a month ago, and just learned that I'm pretty sure we did not execute the quarantine properly. We should probably share that with the families who I had to send the messaging to. And I feel badly that I didn't know that we did it the wrong way. So I think we should expose that. Okay, my five minutes. In the spirit, Matt, in the spirit of being proactive, and Spencer, and how important extracurricular is, I'm here to talk about Franklin County, and what they say about athletes, and their ability to wear masks, and their ability to be distant at active practice. So let me just read it to you. "To minimize the risk of coronavirus transmission, athletes should wait 14 days of symptom monitoring have passed to return to active practice." People in athletics don't talk about active practice. There's a reason they put that word in there. They should wait 14 days to return to active practice or play, as they would not be able to be socially distanced or wear a mask. I can assure you, people that play lacrosse, and baseball, and softball can wear a mask. Major League Baseball players wore masks through entire games last year. So let's talk about what it means if you guys go along with us. And I am asking that you would add an action point tonight, and not honor this 14-day quarantine for athletes. What it means if you do that, is it means you separate kids from their teams, and their teams from kids, for 14 days. There are kids right now, there's a kid yesterday that you asked to leave a team for 14 days. These kids have worked for 10 years to get to this point. If they unfortunately break their arm, they will be at practice the next day. They may not participate, but they will be with their team. And there is zero reason why a young woman or a young man who has been exposed to COVID cannot at least attend practice and be with their team. Now, I would tell you, they could be active. And I've shared proposed language, there's a website, whatpaulsaid.com, and you can go there and read the proposed language. But at a minimum, in the spirit of negotiating and finding what's right for kids, at a minimum, you should allow these kids to be with their team. They should not have to sit at home. I would suggest to you, that's dangerous. It's dangerous to separate a young woman who has worked so hard to be so good at softball, or lacrosse, or whatever, and then tell her, you know what? You don't get to come around. That doesn't make sense. And that's not in the interest of kids. I completely respect everything about the virus. I'm a huge mask advocate, huge mask advocate. The kids I coached this year, they don't know what I look like. I never took my mask off. But there's no reason that somebody can't at least be on the sideline and be part of that team. And so I would just, I would just suggest to you, humbly, the county has this wrong. Athletes can wear masks. They can be distant. It's interesting, the county chooses to use the word "or." They're okay if they could just do one of the two. I'm telling you, they can do both. So, I know it's a tough spot you guys are in, and I understand, you know, I would never ask you to change all the enrollment stuff in the OA, et cetera, et cetera. But this piece here, it, there's not anybody up here that could make sense of, yes, that makes sense. That's in line with what we believe. That's a miss. That's a miss. And so I'd ask you to add it to your agenda tonight, and change it. Thanks.
All right, our next, our next individual is Niti.
Good evening. I'm here because my concern, because of my concern for our community. There are many groups of people who are feeling unheard. People are feeling frustrated because emails are going unanswered, because in webinars, questions are getting skipped. In an effort to amplify their voices, I feel like I regularly get a request to sign the latest group letter addressed to you, or to sign a petition asking you for something. Regardless of which discussion of yours we discuss, whether it's your decision to go all-in on March 1st, or your decision to spend money on an outside educational vendor instead of investing in our own teachers and infrastructure, I'm asking you to please host Opportunities for Dialogue. As a member of our community, I am curious about your decision-making process. Which parent opinions are you considering? How are the different opinions weighted? What evidence gets considered? For example, when you hear that the majority of our elementary students are less than three feet apart, how does that impact your decision? How are conflicts in the evidence resolved? And I'm pretty certain that I am not the only person who is curious about these things. I ask to speak to you today, our Board of Education, to please look more deeply at how to foster true, frank, open, and public dialogue with our community. It is my hope that the burden of this will not fall on our administrative team. Andy Hatton and Chris Potts just talked about how much is on their shoulders, and I think they undersold how much of a burden they took on because of your decision to go in on March 1st. And I hope that any extra time that they have is spent either just breathing or planning for next year. As our elected representatives, I am asking you to please take this on. I ask you to find ways, because whenever we emerge from this pandemic, we will still be one community. The Bridge program that Dr. Imhoff is working on will hopefully bring our students and teachers together. And I'm here to ask you to please find ways to bring our community together. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you for your courageous vote to get our kids back all-in on March 1st, because it is very important, I know, for my son's mental health and his academics. I am back to speak again about the bathrooms, because I listened to the speakers at the last board meeting. There were many accusations and statements that were incorrect, and I am here to set the record straight. I will start off with a question. How much taxpayer money are you willing to spend on lawyer fees? In December, I asked that the board make public their discussion on how much further they will take this through the courts. That never happened. People need to remember that the district spent well over $100,000 before the Windermere family sued. Now, it's over $134,000 with no end in sight. When do the taxpayers get to decide how much of our money you spend on litigation? In this lawsuit, each of your names are on the court documents. Do you agree with the tactics used by your lawyers? Do you know that in order to spend more of the taxpayer money, and to have the Jane and John Doe Windermere family spend more money, sorry, that your lawyers are pressuring to find out the name of the family? Why? I can think of only two reasons that you would need their name: intimidation or retaliation. The name of the family is irrelevant. I am disgusted by this tactic, and I think you should be embarrassed as a board. Fight the issue, not the kindergartner. In a similar vein, the lawsuit against the district for getting back to school five days has an even more egregious argument, of which Upper Arlington families should be made aware. Sorry, I just had COVID a few weeks ago, so I'm having trouble reading, sorry. You and Paul argued that children in Ohio do not have a fundamental right to an education under the Ohio Constitution. Astoundingly, a judge agreed with you. You don't think my kids have a right to an education? Why are we paying the superintendent's salary? Why are you on the school board? And why do we have the highest-paid teachers in the central Ohio? But I digress. Back to the bathrooms. Many speakers last month made the argument that kids want privacy. I agree. No one is arguing to change the private toilet rooms, as you call them. Those are to code. It is the signage that is against code. I've had people tell me that the superintendent and board members are saying that the bathrooms are to code, and with a wave of their hands say, it's just the signs. But exactly? If the signs were okay, you would not be in court. The signage is against code. It has been interesting to watch the superintendent and school board change the story from day to day, month to month, and person to person. The good thing is, I was involved from the beginning, and each story that is told, I can refute with facts. You approved architectural plans that have boy bathrooms, girl bathrooms, and gender-neutral bathrooms, a choice for all kids. I know that you all know this, but I am reiterating it for the others who might be new to the story, or believe the falsehoods on Facebook and Equal UA's website. One of the speakers last month said things that were offensive, hypocritical, and simply wrong. First and foremost, she compared this discussion to the desegregation of bathrooms, and this is an insult to anyone who had to deal with racism. Then the speaker said, "It is cultivating grit, and discomfort is inevitable, and success is found in the ability to adapt and overcome," end quote. The speaker is freely admitting that children will be uncomfortable if they don't have a choice of bathrooms, and I totally agree. Give them a choice. And we don't send our children to elementary school to develop grit when going to the bathroom.
One minute.
Okay. Then she said, quote, "Superintendent Imhoff has always stated that there will be gender-segregated bathrooms in all schools, and this is a reality," end quote. That is not true. Superintendent's sworn testimony to the Ohio BBA says, "No, we're making all bathrooms gender-neutral, so all bathrooms can be used by all kids," end quote. The truth matters. This school board has been hiding behind executive session long enough. Do your job, relabel the bathrooms according to Ohio law. Spend taxpayer money educating our children, not enforcing a national agenda pushed by the School Superintendent Association. Is that why we have these bathrooms? Was that a requirement for our superintendent to be their president-elect? I've recently been wondering that. Did you know that UA started the Bathroom Variance Court case in April of 2020, right after Superintendent Imhoff won his election at the Superintendents' Association?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you're getting pretty close to...
Yep, I'm dying to have one more quote.
Your time, time's up.
Okay. I'll end. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Maya.
I've lived in Arlington for 16 years. I'm ashamed to say this is the first board meeting I've ever attended, because I trusted the district. I have loved living in Arlington. I have trusted the community to make the right decisions for my children, and I never felt like I even had to come. I've never really been that involved in what you guys do. But I've been so moved morally by what's happened in the last few months in this district. And when Dr. Imhoff was talking about the consequences of the pandemic, and how after the pandemic, we're gonna have to heal, there's a lot of things we're gonna have to work through and get over, I thought about your decision, and your disregard for teachers, and the rushed decision to go to March 1st, before our teachers were fully immunized, and the moral failure that decision represents, and what that teaches our children. And that has bothered me so deeply in my heart, to be a part of a community that could not be patient, could not empathize with the position this put teachers in, and other members of our community. We're so close to getting past this pandemic. Human beings, we constantly fail the marshmallow test. But I thought better of our community. I thought we would have cared enough to do the right thing, and we didn't. And I think there's gonna need to be some healing about that. I think the, the way that decision has made our teachers feel, and how moving that presentation from our union reps tonight, I mean, that just got me in my heart. And the way they feel, we've got some work to do. We've gotta, we've gotta heal what has been done by your decision. And that word frank, we need to be frank. So now, I want to talk about the communication failures. There is a really major communication problem in this district. And it is, I'm so concerned about it. I was involved with the Dialogue Now UA group, and we submitted questions to you on February 22nd. We did it respectfully. We had a group of family members get together, we compiled our questions, we had people sign it, we submitted it to Dr. Imhoff, we submitted it to you. You answered most of our questions tonight, but I had to come here and listen for three hours. Like, people don't, shouldn't have to do that to get answers to their questions. There was a real failure of communication, and in the middle of a pandemic, you have to communicate better. And we're not communicating well right now as a district. So I just, you know, this letter was signed by 75 parents. It was barely acknowledged. There's been no response from administration, and I don't think that's okay. I don't think if you get a letter with just clear questions that parents want to know about, you don't not respond to it for weeks. That's not okay. So that needs to be addressed.
One minute.
Okay. So, I, you know, I love this community, and I have so many teachers I admire, and so many administrators who have been influential in my family's life, and I don't want my challenging this to be any reflection of, like, I don't still believe in this community. I do, but I am so disappointed right now. And I think we're better than this, and we have some healing to do because of your decision. And I think a public forum, which is being requested from the union reps, is absolutely imperative. If you can pull that off before spring break, I don't know how you do that, but there needs to be some public dialogue about this decision, and about the bad will it's created in this community. So, thank you, thank you.
Lisa.
Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Lisa. Thank you for allowing me for just a few moments to hear me out on the Ohio Department of Education's FAQ on Planning for Extended Learning. So the good news is, I don't think this will take five minutes. The other good news is, I'm not going to read to you from the FAQ with two exceptions. The not-so-good news is, I'm here to talk about students, their academics, and a focus on improving their academics. I realize that that may not be what people want to talk about, but I think that's where this focus needs to be from here on out. So, on February 9th, the governor conducted one of his daily press conferences, and it just so happens to be that I was half-listening that day, and my ears perked up, when he said, "I expect all public schools that receive federal funds in the state of Ohio to create extended learning plans for their students, and not just select groups of students, all students. The extended learning plans are to focus on the deficiencies in the ways in which students have fallen behind, to no one's fault, other than the natural disaster of the pandemic. But the plans need to be developed and submitted to the Ohio Department of Education and to your public by April 1st." So I came tonight hoping to hear about our school district's extended learning plan. I think I heard a little bit in the superintendent's presentation with the partnerships with other districts, I think there were five or six mentioned, there was a framework mentioned, there were a couple of slides. I'm not exactly clear as to, is that Upper Arlington City Schools' plan for extended learning, or is that a prelude to the plan? And in any case, my sincere hope and desire is that this FAQ is taken seriously, and that extended learning plans are developed for our students, for all of them. The Ohio Department of Education even cites examples of what an extended learning plan can include. And that includes, but is not limited to, extending the current school year, that's 2021 school year, that's starting next school year, 2122 early, that's creating summer school opportunities. And then one of the FAQs, I think it's on page three or four, not to get super nerdy and hyper technical on you, but there was one that struck me, because I think it was April of last year, when I did public participation, asking you all about plans for summer school, or summer enrichment, summer opportunities for lost learning. So it was almost a year ago, here I am back again, feet in the same drum. But Ohio Department of Education in this FAQ says, "Our district already has a summer school every year, is that enough?" The department says, "Schools and districts..." So my message this evening is please, please, please read the FAQ. Please give us a plan that the public and the parents can look at. The department does request that it be posted on your website and that it's filed with the Department of Education, so it should be readily available, available to the public consumption, and I really hope that I don't have to wait till the April board meeting to hear what the plan is. So, thank you for your time, and I am under my five minutes. Have a good evening. I hope you're not here too late. Thank you.
Our next individual is Dennis.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Dennis. My wife and I have lived on Benbridge Road for about 25 years. Both my wife and my daughters graduated from Upper Arlington High School. Before I start, I want everybody to know I'm in favor of the redevelopment of Kingsdale, and I am in favor of a community center. What I oppose is the size, and I'll get to the point in just a minute. I'm here to talk about taxes and tax increment financing. I struggle to understand all of that, so as part of my study, I asked for an analysis of the property tax with and without the TIF. I asked for that from both the city and the school district. Neither has been forthcoming with information. Apparently, an analysis was not done. I've been told that such an analysis can't be calculated because the development is only possible with the TIF, and I disagree. I estimate that the taxes with a TIF, or excuse me, without a TIF would be almost $35 And I've got the calculations right here. I've got a copy for each of you if you'd like to look at them as I finish. Chris, maybe you can take those. I cannot calculate the property tax for the current proposal because of the complexity of the development and compensation agreements. I've read those agreements on multiple occasions, and I'm not sure anybody can. I'm pretty sure that it's not $35 million. As well, without that baseline of what the taxes could be, you have no idea what you're giving away, and you can't negotiate on behalf of our students and taxpayers. So, it appears to me that the Board of Education's decision on the TIF may have taken money away from our schools and our students without even knowing how much. I live in a ranch. It's a great house. It's not a mansion, but last year, my wife and I paid $9,182 in property taxes, and you're giving some of those away to a developer, for-profit business. It bothers me a lot that I've heard several individuals talk about affordable housing as being part of what we're trying to accomplish. Now, the city never said that, but some individuals think that's where we should be headed, but you can't talk about that while taxing families who already live here but may not be able to stay because of the taxes.
One minute.
Thank you. I have one request, and that is, before signing any more TIF agreements, please have someone decipher all of the documents and calculate the difference between the taxes that would be collected with a TIF and without a TIF. I did. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David. And David may not be here, okay. Our final speaker is Katie.
Sorry, I might shiver a little. I'm freezing in here. So, my name's Katie. First, I want to applaud the work of the teachers who've gone back. I do have compassion for the difficult position they're in. However, as a mother of a young child in Upper Arlington, I think I echo the voices of many others who have seen firsthand the damaging and pervasive social-emotional effects of keeping children from their school community, not to mention limiting their access to face-to-face learning. So to name a few, we've seen sensory issues, emotional disturbances, anger, isolation, tics, and more. Kids need school. I also want to thank everyone in this room who worked hard to get the kids back in school. I am really happy to hear that you're constantly evaluating and reevaluating procedures and policies as you go. Along those lines, I wanted to see if you could provide the reasoning behind the decision to require masks for children at recess, keeping in mind that kindergarteners in Upper Arlington are required to wear masks, even though there is an exemption for all kindergarteners in Director Heim's mandates, and keeping in mind that there is an exemption for outdoor recess for all kids in the mandates. And the mandate doesn't state that we need to ensure six feet of distance, but maintain, right? So maintain as a verb would be kind of to actively be working towards it, not as, you know, it has to be perfect all the time, which was echoed by you all. So we know that virus transmission outside is drastically lower. UV rays kill viral particles. Fresh air disperses viral particles. Teachers now have protection from the vaccine, you know, just to name a few. So, as a parent of a young child, I'm very concerned about sort of indefinitely depriving young children of the ability to see the faces of their classmates, which wires their young brains for empathy and fosters greater social-emotional health and well-being. So if you could add this to the various items for review, that would be so great. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
That concludes public participation for tonight. All right, well, we are ready for item eight, and Andy, it's all yours.
All right. the first seven months of the fiscal year. And as you can see with the new charts we're using, compared to budget purpose, or budget, revenue-wise, we are $281,000 better so far than forecast. We are $1.9 million better in expenditures, for a total of $2.2 million better than forecast, should we continue this trend. Here's the next slide. So the $281,000 better than forecast, and what that relates to, you can see in the line, it's state revenue. And why is state revenue higher than forecasted? That's what we had talked about earlier, how the state now has decreased their original budget cut. So originally, we were looking at about a half-million-dollar budget cut, and as that has been rescinded, a large portion of it, we are being made whole throughout the year. So so far, it's about a $250,000, a little over $250,000 increase of catch-up. By the end of the year, it should be about a half a million dollars. But obviously, in the beginning of the year, we did not know that the state would be doing that, so we forecasted that half-million-dollar reduction. The next slide talks about expenditures. And expenditures-wise, you can see that we are $1.9 million better than budget. The majority of that, you would see, is under purchase services, about $879,000. And really, what that relates to is the same conversation we had last month. And due to COVID, and the variances really relate to the amount of substitute teachers we've had, obviously, there's been a lack of substitutes even to, I guess, fill that work, but then also through the times when we've been doing EDL, et cetera, that's allowed for less need for substitutes. Also, our parapros and our ESC costs have decreased from budget purposes because, once again, we are on the EDL and needing less support on certain times. Well, utility costs are also tracking better than expected. As you know, we budgeted higher utility costs than normal this year, knowing that we'd be running some additional, having two additional, more, two more additional buildings than normal, as we have both the Windermere being built and also the new high school being built, so therefore trying to heat and cool those, et cetera. I will tell you right now, it's still temporary heat, so therefore, it's not the, I guess, the uniform heat that will be, that will continue, or that will start once the systems get turned on, so therefore, it's not going through our process right now, which is one of the reasons why we're tracking better than expected. You also see that salaries and benefits are, what, $606,000 better than budget, but once again, you look at the total salaries and benefits, it's only a 0.7% decrease. So that is right within where we would hope it would be. And then finally, expenditure-wise, a 7% increase in other expenses. That relates to, the majority of that relates to food service transfers we thought we were gonna need to make, but as of right now, we're tracking better in food service, so we have not had to transfer those funds from the general fund to food service. We hope that continues to track, and we won't have to make those transfers, so then by the end of the year, we'll be tracking positively here on this and the two. Questions on where we are at the end of the month? You can see, though, relatively, where we expected to be without the cause of COVID, or without COVID really being in play this last, you know, six, seven months when it comes to expenditures of supplies, expenditures of purchase services, where we expect to be. I think you're gonna see those uptick now that we're back in, all in, that we'll be doing some purchases of supplies and doing some contracted services that we were holding off on. Questions? Okay. So the next part then is to update you on where are we on the building projects? And as you know, with the buildings of Windermere, Tremont, and the high school, and, I'm sorry, Barrington and the high school, that's what is currently still being processed, still being constructed, et cetera. We have $165 million spent so far to date. Of that, we have contracts for another $63 million, and then this goes to, I think it was Carol's question, of where are we then with our contingencies or our change orders? And we have about $3.6 million still available. I will tell you, there's probably change orders that are coming of around $2 to $2.5 million, but as of right now, we are expecting about $1 million still in unreserved for potential change orders down the road. So we feel really good where we are still. We talked to Turner pretty much at times weekly, sometimes monthly, on how we're tracking, and they feel very strongly still that we are in a strong, in good shape for our change order balance right now. So hopefully, over the next two or three months, we'll be able to go ahead and bring that to you and say, and how we are tracking, but when you, once you think about it, there, we are through a lot of the more challenging parts of construction, so therefore, we now know mostly where we don't have any more soil issues theoretically, right? So therefore, we've gotten past that. We're closed in now, so ideally, the change order now should be more of the minimal compared to what it could have been in the past. So, once again, Turner feels confident where we are, and we will continue to update you as it comes due. Questions on construction? So, there's three other items I'd like to talk on before we talk about the future of finances here. And I was remiss about two months ago, but it actually worked out better now. We finished our 2019-20 audit, and that ended, that was about December, or in December, we finalized that audit. I am excited to share with you, it was a clean audit. It was a clean opinion. There were no recommendations of improvements. So once again, it was a great experience with, really, auditors came in, looked at the things they needed to look at, and they left. What we got just last week, though, was then the auditor state gives an award out. If you have a clean audit and you don't have any kind of either questionable costs or internal control issues, they released this auditor state award. We've won this several, or not won this, we've received this several times over the last couple of years, and then we just got this again this year that we'll go ahead and post, et cetera. But this means a lot to us, just showing that when the auditor states come in, they came in, that we met their expectations and that we were doing things correctly. Questions on that? I know we shared that with the finance committee, and we updated the finance committee once that audit was done, but I was remiss to go ahead and share with you all the good news that that audit's been complete and we passed with flying colors.
Andy, this is, actually, do you have a quick question? Does that audit, does that have anything to do with our credit rating, or is that something that's totally separate?
You know, I will tell you, if we had a, the answer's yes, because if we had a qualified, I mean, basically, an unclean opinion, that would create serious issues when it comes to our, to our credit rating. One of the things that we've been fortunate of for all the years here in this district is we've always had a strong, strong audit, mostly a clean audit over these, over those years, and we've also had a strong sense of community support and large evaluations, which is a huge impact of the credit rating, which we will continue to go ahead and want. I recall it a bond rating, but same thing. You know, we have the second-highest bond rating possible in one category, and the first-highest in the second, or in a different organization, so we feel good about that, and there's just one more, one more way to, I guess, show that and continue that process. So that's a good question, where to connect the dots.
Andy, I'll just also chime in and just say, you know, this doesn't happen everywhere. You know, year after year, Upper Arlington seems to just really work very hard to get a clean audit and just, you know, that's really commendable because lots of districts aren't, you know, aren't there, and like you say, it can, it's a slippery slope once you get started with problems, so, good job.
Thank you. And I would be remiss, we have a great staff, and really, the, what the staff does day-to-day is huge in accomplishing this and then also accomplishing what the auditors ask for. And my staff's been great over the years of making sure we follow the parameters that we're supposed to, but also then making sure that we are providing services to our staff and to our community, and I just feel very fortunate, so we're in a good spot, and hopefully we continue that run. Second item I want to mention is, there is on your agenda tonight, approval for an iPad purchase of about 3,000 iPads. This, once again, is our normal cycle that we have our, we're about in our fifth year of some of our iPads that we did with the second, our second lease we did several years ago. And these iPads now have reached really their life, and we are going to go ahead and order and replace those. We have, after looking at the numbers, et cetera, we're gonna go ahead and do a cash purchase this time versus a lease purchase. The fact that we can save, you know, anywhere between $30,000 and $40,000, allowing us to go ahead and use that money for future purchases with, for technology instead, that money will come out of the PI fund, and it'll also come out of the Protection Plan Fund when it comes to how we protect those devices, so those cases that go with it. Total cost will be about $1.3 million. That includes the cases, that includes the iPads, that includes some Apple Care for a Year, and also includes some professional development that we would normally pay for that's gonna be included in this purchase. that's going to be included in this purchase. That will be, assuming the board approves that, we will go ahead and make that order then, first thing tomorrow, so that we can have those iPads in by early May, and we can start that process of collecting and then redistributing over the next, really in May, before the summer comes and goes. Questions on that? Because that obviously is a large purchase, but we feel good. Denise, our chief technology officer, did a great job of getting all the options, all the quotes, and we really felt like the cash purchase was, makes the most sense this time around. And finally, if you look at your fixed asset disposals, you will see a lot of disposals this, or this month. And what that relates to is, we are cleaning out, are cleaning up our fixed assets now based on some of the demolitions that have occurred, some of the assets that have already been fully depreciated, that were still in our books, that didn't really carry a value, but just basically cleaning all those up. So we started that process, we'll continue that process as we, I guess, demolition of Wickliffe and also the old high school. So you'll see that then here next year. But we're cleaning those up before the audit comes, or before the audit takes place next year, next year. So that being said, let's jump to really the conversation I'm excited about. And then we've had some conversation about this last month, and it really is, where are we financially now, and where do we project to be financially in the next couple of years? As you know, we're required to do a five-year forecast, and the five-year forecast we did back in June, that we all had discussion on, was we made some adjustments, right, in order to go ahead and push, push back the levy for a year. And those adjustments were, we put in a budget reduction plan, including a hiring freeze, and we also decreased our, our cash balance reserve from basically three months to about a month and a half. As you then go forward from June, you go forward to where we are right now, we've had some very positive, some positive results in these variance categories right here. So you can see property valuations, we saw an increase from what we expected, mostly related to utility property values, to be honest with you. But overall, over the next five years, that increase is about $2 million on our bottom line. The biggest change from the forecast that you approved in June was state funding. If you remember, when we were talking about things in June, we were thinking that we may be getting cut almost $1 million and a half, $2 million a year. So we put that in to be conservative in our five-year forecast. Come now, about 12 months later, six months, but then 12 months, where it's going to be headed to, is because of the state and because of the, some positive budget information they've received over the, over the last six, nine months with, when it comes to income taxes, those amounts of reductions, that $2 million, we thought, never came to fruition. The $500,000 that was actual, that got basically eliminated. So when you take that into place and basically assume that we're going to get what we got the previous years, so it's back in 2019, and before that, that accumulates to about $7.5 million over five years that will, can add now back to our revenue that we didn't have over that five-year forecast. Insurance premiums, we talked about, were the medical premiums, where we had projected about a 3% increase. Because of our, our changes in our insurance plan, less claims, partially because of the COVID, we were able to go ahead and reduce it to a 0% actual premium increase versus a 3%, which is a savings to us. When you look at the, with the hiring freeze that we had, there were some additional savings there that we have taken into consideration. So the insurance, along with the hiring freeze, is about $2.9 million overall for five, over five years. And then you look at the, what we talked about earlier, about the federal money that's coming, I mean, the $1 million that'll be coming here, actually coming now, and then ideally, a larger amount next time around. Those allow us to go ahead and add the items we're talking about, adding some of the summer curriculum we're talking about, adding the air purifiers, those types of things to help our students, to help the district, to help our staff, without hitting the general fund, which is important, because that allows us, even though they're one-time expenditures, it allows our balance to stay strong. So when you take all those into consideration, the five-year forecast has changed about $13.1 million at the end of five years, which is important to us. What you'll see, next slide, Karen, please. So as I reviewed this with the finance committee, and had some discussions with them, and really looking at how we're tracking and the positive variance we're having, and looking at where we're tracking this year so far, about $2 million better than we expected, though, as I mentioned, I do expect some of those expenditures to catch up now that we're back in full-time. Based on the financial climate, just throughout the community, throughout some struggles individuals are having at homes, knowing that we are constantly looking at ways to be more efficient, we are looking at our budgets, trying to find ways to do things better. The 2020, the 21, 22 budget that we are starting to work on now, that is very impactful on kind of where we're headed for this next year. We've got, once again, a zero-based budgeting that we plan on doing, which will allow us to go ahead and meet those needs that we have. But also, because of that federal money, will allow us to do certain things that we want to do to help get our students back up to where we can support them for, I guess, for wellness sake and educational sake. But with all that in mind, we're here, after talking to the finance committee, that we would recommend that we actually push off the levy one more year. We feel like that's the right thing to do for the community. We feel like we can sustain that, and we think, once again, as we are all tightening our belts, as we're all making the changes to really help the community, help individual families, help individual homeowners, and really still offer the education we have, we have the ability to do that because of these changes in the variables and some of the changes you all made back in June of last year on making some tough decisions. And this allows us to go forward, and the recommendation for myself and the finance committee would be that we would postpone that one more year. So we would not do a levy in November '21, but we would do the levy in 2022. So that's a lot said. I know we've been talking about it, I mean, off and on, but we wanted to come out formally and kind of, that's our approach. If the board is comfortable with that, I would ask for a motion in a few minutes. I guess my first question is, is there any discussion on that? Any thoughts? The finance committee wants to share any kind of a summary of our conversations, as we've had those, I'll just lay it up to you before you make a potential motion.
I just feel as though we thoroughly walked through all the different scenarios and asked lots of questions, as always. I probably had a few more than Scott, because he's been doing this a bit longer, but I feel really comfortable with where we are, given the changes that have occurred, and feel like we're in a good position. So that's kind of what I wanted to share.
Yeah, and I would reiterate what Lori just said, you know, we did go through the numbers quite a bit, you know, and then just list the things that, you know, the summary things that Andy just mentioned, financially, for the property valuations, the hiring frees, insurance premiums, that's almost, you know, $3 million. The state funding has come through, and we were scared last year at this time that, you know, we're going to get cut big, and instead, you know, we got, we were made whole and then some. So with, I guess, $13 million plus over five, five years, I think we'd like to make that motion. So Lori, do you want to?
Wait a minute, I have something to say. Or I guess I can say something after you make a motion. We can talk later. Well, no, just, Andy, with all the, with all the times that you, that you have given your forecast and then been so very close to it, when I, when we look at it, and even your revised forecast just changes very little, you have earned the trust of our community. And I recall people, people calling on your information when we do come up for a levy as to whether it's needed or not. And I, I am just very excited about this ability to perhaps put off the levy for a year, because it's a very tough thing for our community. And our community's been through a lot, and I just want to say, it wouldn't have been possible for us to have the confidence that we could continue to provide the education that our community expects and deserves without your financial leadership and your team. And we've been messaging to the community for years that we were going to be on the ballot in the fall. And I think because we have, the community has, they're trusting you, that we are going to be able to continue that, even though we're putting it, putting it off, that they'll continue to trust in you and in us, that we're using our public funds wisely.
Thank you. And I think the important thing, and Carol hit on it, and I meant to mention this earlier. So this will mean that that levy that we passed with a three-year life that we were expecting, we're going to stretch out to five, to five years. But please also understand that that also means that we are following the forecast, right? So if all of a sudden something, something increases, then we're going to have to make sure that we find areas to decrease to. I just lost my train of thought. Oh, the other thing is, I want also, as we talk about the hiring frees, et cetera, I think it's important to make sure that we're all on the same page. That hiring freeze really relates to the general fund, right? And those are for, for like new positions. So ones that we haven't filled yet, those are still, still being budgeted, et cetera. It would be the new positions. And really, what it relates to is if there's other ways to go ahead and reallocate, really, you know, if it's a purchase service and all of a sudden it becomes salary, that's not really the freeze. The freeze truly is any additional new positions without having offsetting expenditures for that. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that.
I always just wanted to comment, I really appreciate all the work that's been done, and I kind of echo what Carol's been, has said, and I think we've all talked about where everyone's kind of tightened their belts, and if there was any time that, what, to reduce our reserves, that this was like the definition of rainy day. But it does put a high level of importance on passing the levy in '22. So I just think we have to keep that in mind and like, be willing to do that hard work. I definitely think this, when we come to the decision, like, I think it's the right one, and I think it's fiscally responsible. I think we've had really positive things happen, but it does, I think, make that '22 really, really important.
Jenny, what you just said, I don't think we want to overlook, is there is no option in '22, I mean, for failure. I mean, we've put this off, et cetera. I mean, it shows you the importance, because we are getting closer and closer to that cliff. And so you're absolutely right. It's well said.
You know, I want to make one other quick comment. I know it's late, but I know you'd agree that it takes the whole team, right? I mean, it's not just necessarily the Treasurers Department, but it's all of your administrative team, that you all work together. And if you didn't have that, their support and their hard work, you wouldn't be able to be here telling us how, you know, how positive and how, how, how much financially solid we are.
You know, Scott, if I didn't know any better, I'd say you had a past life in education.
Might have been.
Because I will tell you.
I was feeling bad.
You are exactly right, and that shouldn't be taken lightly, is we have a team here that understands finances, which is not always necessarily normal. So when we say we have to tighten the belt, or we know that we have to meet certain parameters, this team, all the way from, from HR to operations, to teaching and learning, to you name it, we all come together and figure out how we can do it. And that's one of the, one of the true blessings here, is how we are focused on the students, you know, staff, community, and how to run this efficiently and effectively. And this team does it, it really does. That's a good point. Thank you. All right, so with that.
Yeah. So I would propose that we move the levy by one year, given all of the wonderful management we have as it relates to our financials. Yeah.
So Lori, how about, how about this? Delay the operating levy for, for November, plan for November 2021 until 2022, based on what we just shared?
Much better said, thank you.
No, you're good.
So we're going to go ahead and take the vote now, then, Andy?
Did I forget a second? Okay, Jenny. Yeah, let's take the vote now.
Oh, I can't do that.
Got a second?
Yep, Jenny seconded it.
Okay.
Okay. Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
And Mr. McGinsey?
Aye.
Motion carried. Great, thank you.
All right, we are now ready for our consent agenda. So that's Roman numeral nine.
Oh, I'm not, no, we're not.
We got Mr. Boss.
Oh, yeah, we got the instruction update. Sorry about that. Yep. All right, so you're stuck with me again this month. It's way past Mike Hilton's bedtime again still, so just here to talk through change orders like we do every month, and then give a quick update on, on the construction projects. Then we'll move forward, I think, with the consent agenda after that. And so, as mentioned earlier, every month, we bring the project change orders to you. They've been reviewed at, with our facilities committee prior to bringing them here, and even prior before bringing them to the facilities committee, they've been vetted through Turner greatly and pushed back tons on, on everything that is being asked. So as you see there, Barrington, Turner approved, we had 12 change orders under $25,000 that equaled $61,000. And so, just various things coming up within that renovation, but all under $25,000 individually there. At Greensview, no change orders again this month, as you would expect. We're still closing out some items there, but nothing at Greensview, nothing at Tremont, no new change orders there this month either. As we move on to the next slide, that's all right. We had three change orders for $20,000 at Wickliffe. Those were just some, some minor things still fixing there at Wickliffe. We will, just as a heads up, and we haven't, we'll be bringing it to the facilities committee next month, there'll be a larger change order at Wickliffe that has to do with the chiller noise that we've been dealing with there, and trying to be good neighbors to our neighbors there and to fix that problem there. At Windermere, total change orders under $25,000 would be 12 for $86,000. Bulletin 19, and I'm just pulling one out of that $86,000 that was higher, just, just under $25,000, just to share. We had some, some storm revisions with catch basins and some trees that, that were in the way, they had to come down. So that was a larger change order of that 86, so I'm just sharing what that one is. We do have one large change order there for $146,000. That is, has to do with Bulletin 7. And so, as you know, Wickliffe and Windermere are the same building, and we learned a lot of things that needed to be changed at Wickliffe, that were changed at Wickliffe. And so we're just conforming the plans at Windermere with what we did at Wickliffe in terms of changes. And so that is what that big change is, things that were found throughout that construction. And total to date at Windermere, $89,194. As you go on to the high school, the high school lumps all their change, their items together typically, and so this is change order 26 at the high school, which was 10 total items that equaled $101,000. Of that 101, just calling out three larger ones there that really make up a majority of that change order. In all of our buildings, the fire department for Upper Arlington has, has made requests where maybe adding a, a strobe here or an exit sign there, things that they just think would add to the safety of the building that are above and beyond the safety that the code calls for, but in their eyes, things that are important, and when they're important in our safety services' eyes, they're important in our eyes. And so, and some elevator revisions. So total to date at the high school is still in the negative, at $81,000. As Andy alluded to, we do have a lot of, some changes coming forward that we'll review at the next facilities meeting, and we'll see that 81 start to go more into the, the positive range. As a lot of those change orders that Andy alluded to, coming down the road, are all high school-related. Just catching up on that construction and catching up on the pushback that Turner continues to push on Rossili and their subs to adjust change orders. So it won't stay in the negative for long, is my point. But again, it's all planned for, and we're prepared for that. We'll go on to the next slide, just to kind of give some pictures of what's going on in our projects. So that is, that is. So that is, that is Barrington Elementary right there, those temporary stairs will become permanent in the future, but if you look through the one opening, that is the front door on Barrington, so if you were to kind of walk this way, it would be going out into the, into the old playground area, that door, so that area right there has been opened up and in the middle of renovation. Our next picture is really just a good shot of Barrington and the brickwork that they've done throughout one of the hallways and opening up, opening it up and the drywall work that's being completed. We spent about two hours today going through Barrington's schedule, going through Wickliffe's schedule, going through Windermere's schedule. One of the things that has to be coordinated for all three of those schedules is things that are the responsibility of the district that the contractors aren't doing, so, for example, the abatement contractor coming into Barrington and/or Wickliffe before it gets torn down. All the playground equipment was pulled out, we're doing that ourselves as well, and so we spent a lot of time today looking at schedule, you know, when are they going to be done here so I can bring in another contractor to do playground equipment and things like that, and so some great coordination happening today, and all those projects are forging ahead on schedule to, to be ready, Barrington, Wickliffe, a new Windermere, Wickliffe coming down in June, a new Windermere being ready, you know, in July for us to move things in and, and get ready for the next school year. On the next picture, again, just showing some classrooms with a garage door that will go in between classrooms there, and so they'll be finishing drywall and, and, and starting painting there, and ceiling grid, et cetera, but we are, we are in really good shape in the renovation at Barrington. I think some of those spaces on the first floor will be, will be ready in May, and not ready for us to move into because we won't have life safety and occupancy, but ready for us to feel really good about moving items directly from the pods and the mods before they're torn down, not to a temporary spot, but right into the classrooms. And so we'll go on to the next picture, just another picture of a classroom there at Barrington, and the, and the ductwork on the right there that's complete. This is Windermere, this is a little outdated, quite frankly, because the, on the curved part over there, the brickwork is already happening, and it's closed in in the front main office there, that should look really familiar, like Wickliffe, like the front of Wickliffe, but that is moving along really well over there, windows are being installed throughout, they're just making their way around the building with the brick, and some, go on to the next picture here. This is if you were standing at the top of the learning stairs, once they go in on the second floor, looking back into the library, and then you see the bridge there, that isn't really a bridge, that's where the glass will come down, and then the dining commons on the other side of that, and so all the rough ends are in, all the overhead is in, and go on to the next picture, please, you see a lot of finishing happening with drywalls, you can see the small group rooms there within one of the learning neighborhoods, and if you go on to the next picture, you see there are some windows in place, again, drywall complete, so really, really forging ahead at Windermere. Just, just this week, the, the slab was poured in the gym, and so they will start to, start to prepare that gym for finishes, the roof is done, once they get the windows in, that gym will be our staging location for everything coming from old Wickliffe to new Windermere teacher items, because we won't be ready to move those into the classrooms right away, but they're going to finish the gym by June 1st, so we can move all the teacher items of Windermere into, into new Windermere and be ready for a move into the classrooms, which will, the move to new Windermere will happen by movers, the move into the classrooms is most likely will happen by our team, with some help from our Yes Summer Kids crew that we plan on reemploying this summer and getting them back to work in a socially, socially distant safe way. Now moving on to the high school, they're making their way around the building with what I'll just call the eyebrow metalwork that's at the top above the windows, so if you go down Brandon Road, you can see that, to start to head, heading down Brandon Road there, they're start, they're planning to start the glass on the outside of the pool in the coming weeks, and making a lot of progress on the exterior. On the next picture, you will see, this is the, not the orchestra level, but the next level in the auditorium, so railings are in, they'll start to, you know, do, bring down what they call the dance floor, the scaffolding that's holding up all the wood up top that gets them to the very top of the auditorium to do work, but the auditorium's really, really coming together. Just this week, we had a meeting with David Hammond and Anthony Alshire, who I, who I really need to point out out there in the back, they've been here all night, and your whole setup doesn't happen without them, and we should really thank them for everything they did here, but what they do on a daily basis, running our auditorium at the high school, they, they both are amazing, and we really appreciate what they do, and they're really excited about this space. So we'll go on to the next picture, this is one of our, one of our academic areas with the garage doors you see there, the ceiling grid is in, the lights are in, you see a speaker there in one of the, in one of the areas, the paint is done, they have started putting in flooring in many of the classrooms at the high school, and if you're on the second floor, over a third of the main corridors, flooring is in. And so, moving really quickly, they just did the mock-up of the Torazo for Golden Bear Boulevard, and so that is on site now, and something they'll be starting in probably late April. The next photo is just one of the two-story common areas, so you can see the glass and some classrooms are done, there's the lights within the ceiling grid, they're starting to clear that area out so they can start to work on floor finishes, but again, the academic side is feeling really, really good, and, you know, anticipating a lot of those areas being done here in late April, early May, on the academic side, in preparation for life safety into the summer. The next picture is just, actually, two pictures, the one on the left is just Golden Bear Boulevard, you can see windows have gone in and a lot of that area, and that three-story area, the drywall, I would tell you that this weekend, they probably had 40 to 50 people there working, that drywall is all taped and muddied and ready for final, ready for first coat of primer and paint, so making great progress there. On the right there, a little hard to see, but you can see the metal framing that jets out of that area, that is the opening to the, to the two-story Comfort Commons, and all that will become glass, and then there's a door to get in that area, but that is the area that is down in our steam area where all the classes can spill out into, into a larger workers, workspace there at the high school. The second, next to last picture here is the pool, you can, the dark area you're seeing is the deck, the deck has been poured, we had our final cement pour on Monday of this week, and so all the concrete is poured in the pool area, and they're really just starting, starting to work on finishes within that area, they expect to be filling the pool in May, that does not mean we'll be able to use it in May or June, but we will have a good month probably where our team gets used to how to take care of this pool before, before it gets into July when we're, when we're open, but making really, really good progress, really, on the, on the whole project. And then that, that is it? Any questions?
I just want to say, almost throughout this whole time, I felt like Robin's spirit was with us, and, and seeing the Comfort Commons is so moving, and it's, knowing all of the things that we're doing that were part of her, her dreams of what we would be able to accomplish, and we're getting there, I'm just really pleased. Thank you so much for, for sharing this presentation and for bringing, bringing her back in amongst us and back to mind.
Thank you, yeah, I think she'd be really proud of how the building's coming along and her stamps on a lot of it through the years of planning, so. All right, thank you.
All right, Chris, thank you very much. And last but not least, our consent agenda, finally. So we're Roman numeral nine, A, B, C, and D, let's just get that on the table, and then if there's any discussion, we can have it. So can I get a motion?
So moved, so the consent agenda. I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion before we vote? Okay, Mr. Geisfeld.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
And Mr. McKenzie?
Aye, motion carried. Then we're going to go to Roman numeral 10, and even though it's not, looks like it's designated for that, I talked to Andy, and I think we'll go ahead and take each one of these items separately, so we'll just take the first item and for Musco, and we'll put a motion on the table, and then we'll talk about it if we need to. So can I have a motion for the first item?
I'll, I'll so move. I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the Musco lighting? Okay, Mr. Geisfeld?
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. McKenzie?
Aye, motion carried. So the second one is the hazardous material abatement, can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this? Okay, Andy?
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. McKenzie?
Aye, motion carried, and the third one, the...
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All right, Andy?
Oh, you know what, I do have a question, I'm sorry, because I wrote this down earlier, when Chris was talking about it, we talked that it was not to exceed $200,000, is that, was that including the soft costs in there also, or is that just the construction cost?
Jenny, just so you know, we actually made an amendment to that, and we, so that verbiage right there, the amount, not to exceed $200,000, is crossed out.
Oh.
So you actually go to the resolution in the back, it goes to exactly what Chris said.
Oh, I don't, I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're good, you're good, but I'm glad you asked the question.
Yeah, that was, that's key, yeah, it just ends at UHS. Can I, do you have a pen?
Oh, it just ends at UHS, there's not an amount.
The actual, the actual resolution in the back talks about the, what Chris had mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, so the $200,000 is in the construction cost, the soft cost, $42,500.
Yeah, I wrote that, yep, perfect, I just want to make sure.
No, I'm glad you asked.
Call the roll.
Okay. Look, go ahead, go ahead, Carol.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Oh, okay.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. McKenzie?
Aye, motion carried.
All right, I think we're ready for adjournment, can I have a?
So moved. I'll second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
And Mr. McKenzie?
Aye, motion carried, meeting adjourned.